Good afternoon. I'd like to call the City Council meeting of May 5th. Happy Cinco de Mayo. May 5th, 2015 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Snyder.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Each month we like to recognize employees who are achieving milestones with the city. And this month I'd like to read a number of names for their years of service. And two of the employees are here today to receive their pins in person. First with five years, Kyle Lowry, police officer with the police department. And Megan Harrison, a police officer with the police department. With 10 years of service, Josh Thompson, a PC network technician too at administrative services. Curtis Harrison, a senior plans examiner, community development. Ryan DeJulio, fire inspector two at the fire department. Mark Cavalier, welder, fabricator in the public works department. Teresa Lancy, water wastewater maintenance planner and scheduler in public works. Kevin Strasberg, a park project technician in parks and recreation. Alberto Cuevas, airport maintenance worker two in the airport department. And Steven Spurlock, airport patrol officer two at the airport. With 15 years of service, Jeff Demming, animal control officer in the police department. Mick Cronman, 15 years with the harbor operations manager with the waterfront. And Rebecca Clarich, public safety dispatcher with the police department. With 20 years of service, Roger Arroyo, senior control systems operations specialist in public works. And then two employees who are here today have 25 years of service. They are Bee Galarte, project planner with community development. And Mari Selas Salinas, project planner with community development.
Why don't we go in alphabetical order?
So Bee, come on up. There's your pin. Beatrice Bee Galarte began her career with the city of Santa Barbara in December 1989 as a temporary planning technician. Just seven months later, she was hired as a regular employee and began working her way up through the ranks. In 2001, Bee was promoted to project planner. On May 18, 2015, Bee's latest promotion to senior planner takes effect, and she starts her new role as a supervisor of the development and environmental review section. Bee came to the city with a bachelor of arts degree from UCSB in sociology and Spanish. She has staffed the architectural board of review and worked on a wide variety of development projects, including the Ralph supermarket downtown, the St. Francis Hospital expansion project. Doesn't that count like it's 100-plus projects? Okay. And the Yana Nali condos. Bee's organizational skills and knowledge of both the big picture and the day-to-day work of the planning division has made her the ideal person to create and implement planning policies. She's worked on a large number of significant policy documents, including the recently adopted general plan update, Plan Santa Barbara, the growth management program, the Upper State Street Study, the creation of the staff hearing officer position, the inclusionary housing ordinance, the tenant displacement assistance ordinance, and most recently, the new zoning ordinance update or project. Bee's received a number of awards and recognitions for work and dedication, including community development's employee of the quarter in 2013. So Bee, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the city council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. And thank you for all you have done for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all so very much. So 25 years ago with Ms. Salinas that's coming up after me, and I started basically on the same week, we were the planning commission technician, not the planning, the ABR technician and the ABR secretary. And we were so green and we were like deer in the headlights, you know, and having no idea what we got ourselves into. And I just know I was so excited to start my career with planning and an opportunity to work with so many different people and learn all that the city had to offer and that the planning division had to offer. But little did I know that the next 25 years I would work with such great people and on such great projects. Every single day, I'm a crybaby, every single day I learned something new and I meet great people. And I just want to express how grateful and how appreciative of all the opportunities this city has given me. The planning division has some very smart, caring, and really fun people, many of who have become my friends for life. And I thank your council, all the boards and commissions that do such great policy and direction for our city. Santa Barbara is a great city, and I could not have worked in a better place. I'm looking forward to many more years. I don't know if 25. But I look forward to more good years. And I really want to thank our city administrators, our managers, our supervisor, all our great admin support staff, all the planners, all the city staff that we work with on a daily basis, and that really make our workplace a great place to be. So thank you. Thank you for continuing to set great policy and to love the city of Santa Barbara like all the planning division does. Thank you.
And Mari Selas. Oh, yes. That was quick. No, I was kidding. There you go. Mari Selas Salinas began her career with the city of Santa Barbara as a temporary recording clerk in March 1990. After various stints as acting planning technician and acting senior recording secretary in the early 90s, she was appointed to the permanent planning technician position in 1994. Her willingness to help wherever needed, combined with her interests and abilities, were evident to the department, and Mari Selas was promoted to project planner in 2013. Mari Selas started as the recording secretary to the architectural board of review, then became the ABR staff person. She moved to the development review section where she worked on a number of high-profile cases such as the Rogers Tract housing development, the Inn of the Spanish Garden, and the Santa Barbara Zoo. Mari Selas served many years as the lead planner for the zoning counter, where she provides invaluable advice to applicants and the general public. Because of her ability to distill complex information into user-friendly terms, she's been the author of most of the planning division handouts. She also had the vision to create the planning central website. Mari Selas has trained and mentored countless staff, both past and present. Mari Selas is a go-to person within the community development department when it comes to technology and is instrumental in implementing and extracting information from the Tidemark Advantage Permit Tracking System. For those reasons, she's currently a core team member in the Tidemark Advantage Replacement Project. It's my, Mari Selas, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the city council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Thank you very much.
I'll keep this short because Bee, I think, said everything that I had to say as well. I want to thank everyone, and I just want to say, you know, when I first got here, I had only been in California a few months when I got a job at the city. I interviewed for the job, first time in California, fresh out of Texas, no idea what I was getting myself into. Bee was right. And I didn't realize at the time that I had reached a fork in the road and was starting on a path that would change my life. I joined an organization that helped me reach a potential that I didn't know that I had. It may be hard for some people to believe that right now, but I used to be a really shy person. I think, I think for the first six months at the city, I never came out of the cubicle. People didn't even know I existed, except for the meetings and Bee. I really enjoy what I do. I love that I get to help the public every day. I love the organization, the decision-makers, the policies, everything, everything about it. Every time I do something different, I just love everything about it. It's, I love change and I love the challenges that it brings. Our jobs are very challenging at times, and ultimately, it's the people that I work here that keep me here. They're more than my coworkers. They are my friends. They're my extended family. They've been with me through the highs and the lows of my life. I wouldn't be here today without them and my family. Thank you.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we do have a number of public comment speaker slips. On your way out, if you can take your conversations outside so we can hear the public comment speakers. We have two minutes here at the podium. We'll start with Phil Walker to be followed by Tom Widrow.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council. Talk about Alita, and it was good to see two 25-year, well, first-experienced city employees. And, you know, they said a very good thing. I'm into my 33rd and a half years, and I've never been bored, and it's the people you work with. So let's hear it for the city of Santa Barbara employees. Two quick items. Again, March 20th, 2011, I worked that night, and there was a hard, hard spill at Kachuma. The Kachuma project was originally predicated on seven years of water use. Things have sort of morphed in the interim, but came out last week at the COE meeting that the, they're still, the county of Santa Barbara Water Agency is still concerned. They're not certain on how much water remains in the lake. And there was a topographic bathometric survey done 18 months ago now, and Doug Morgan, director from Montecito Water District, raised some concerns about it. And it's not a time to be uncertain about how much water you have left, so it truly amazes me in this day and age. Also, the county fire department of Los Angeles had a spot about trees. There's a big concern, especially in the urban wildland interface, about trees sick, dead, and dying, desiccating, going quick. And it's up to everybody's concern to use their due diligence and clear their property if they need to do it and get it done soon. Thank you.
Tom Widrow will be followed by Jeff Bard, and then the final speaker will be Kate Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. I just want to use this time to say thank you to the city council, to all of you, all of you members, for being gracious and receiving City Watch. We've only been in existence really since January of this year as a, what some would call a watchdog group. I would call us more of a, hopefully, a helpful collaborative organization that provides some consistency in terms of our voice on issues like the mentally ill on the street, Highway 101 widening, and the drought, public safety, other pertinent issues. In light of term limits for all of you, and in light of district elections, which are also going to change the composite of the city council, I think it makes sense to have a consistent voice. We'll be here each and every Tuesday for as long as we can. We'll also have editorials appearing in the news press on occasion. Also, we will host for the Voices of Santa Barbara, Frank Hotchkiss. Councilmember Hotchkiss gave up his slot, and now I take it once a month. So I'll be there on KC SB, and you're all invited. I've actually had Dale, a councilmember Francisco, on before, and it's been a good discussion. It's not, once again, meant to be combative. It's meant to be illuminating. It doesn't mean it won't be interesting and a little bit contentious. So I just wanted to thank you all for that. We'll also participate in trying to help find some replacements for you in upcoming elections. Not that you can be replaced. This is an excellent council. Our organization really believes in the way that you work together despite that we don't always agree on every issue. No one does. But we aim to be a constructive force in Santa Barbara city politics and policy. And once again, I'm grateful for the reception. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Widrow, I'd like to welcome City Watch and invite you to have regular meetings with me, since I get sometimes that I want to tell you more about the subjects that you're talking about.
Set me straight.
And also, I'm a former journalist, and I'm going to hold you to some high standards, okay? You're coming onto the scene, and you're here saying you're going to help find candidates. Well, let's engage, okay?
I'm all, I'm up for it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jeff Bard.
Madam Mayor, members of council, actually speaking on KC SB tonight at 7:00 PM, Radio Occupy broadcasts. And we have a taped interview. I'm not sure if it will air tonight, but we might be myself discussing a vital public health issue, specifically the nuclear issue, with Reverend Dr. Douglas Miller, author of Jesus Goes to Washington, and Matt Margulace, MD. And it's not a technical discussion at all. It's just a colloquial discussion. My training and background is both law and public health. As you know, I talk a lot about preventive health issues, such as the pertussis and measles outbreaks, tuberculosis, and animal cruelty and prevention, and ADA utilization of animals for PTSD treatment, for all these veterans that are coming back from these horrible wars. However, the basis, the basis for that activism is the right to free expression, which is both a federally protected right and also a right under the California Constitution. And I'm deeply concerned with trends at the federal, state, and municipal level to constrain free speech. Now, most of what I have to say is consistent with CDC policy, California Department of Public Health, and the local Santa Barbara Public Health Department. There's a lot of people on the internet, or they're saying things quite different than what we have to say. But I would just caution that when you consider legislation, that you be very careful not to trespass against federally protected rights, such as free expression, and also ADA rights involving service animals. I've heard there've been, you know, some, you know, real close calls that you've been making lately, so please try to be, continue to be careful. You could subject the city to a preliminary injunction, or a permanent injunction, or a 42 USC 1983 suit. Thank you.
Kate Smith.
Hello, Madam Mayor and the Santa Barbara City Council. I have not been here since October 2nd, 2013, because there was an arrest, and there was supposed to be a trial. And I signed that I would not come back to this podium until the trial had ended. I'm an advocate, an activist, and a whistleblower. I'm an ADA advocate for the mentally ill, the intellectually disabled, and the elderly who are powerless and vulnerable when they're thrown into the court system. I'm an activist for legal abuse syndrome. Please Google that. Legal abuse syndrome. It's a psychic injury. It falls under post-traumatic stress disorder. It results from the loss of justice or from retaliation. So, I was at this podium on October 2nd, 2013. I was speaking out against policing for profit. And something happened. This is putting you on notice, and this is to notify our citizens of Santa Barbara The medical emergency response team that was called could not get the stretcher up to the second floor of this building. This is the Santa Barbara City Hall. Do you understand what that means? Do you?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Well, no. Let me just say, it's a spring-loaded stretcher. It's too big for the ancient elevator.
Thank you.
And it's so heavy that they can't carry it up the stairs and then load a person on it to go downstairs.
Understood.
That means if there's a shooter, if there's a stroke victim, a heart attack, they cannot
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Your time is up.
Get emergency response.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. And on to the consent calendar. You have a number of items to read.
Item number three, adoption of ordinance for lease amendment to lease number 23017 between MAG Aviation and the city of Santa Barbara, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a second amendment to lease agreement 23017 as previously amended July 1st, 2010, with MAG Aviation, a partnership in the city of Santa Barbara, for operation of a self-service aviation fueling facility at 1600 Cecil Cook Place at the Santa Barbara Airport, effective upon adoption of the enabling ordinance to allow a one-year waiver of scheduled CPI rental adjustment. Item number four, records destruction for administrative services department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the administrative services department in the city clerk's office and human resources division. Item number four, records destruction for waterfront department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the waterfront department in the administration office. Item number seven, set a date for public hearing regarding renewal of levy for fiscal year 2016 for the wildland fire suppression assessment, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue the wildland fire suppression assessment within foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general or ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof. Preliminary approving and updated engineer's report stating intention to continue assessments for fiscal year 2016 and establishing a time of 2:00 PM on Tuesday, May 19th, 2015, in the city council chambers for a public hearing on the wildland fire suppression assessment. Item number 10, acceptance of public street easement deed for 3885 State Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, accepting a public street easement over the real property commonly known as 3885 State Street for all street purposes.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I live in the benefit assessment district for the wildland fire suppression assessments, so I'll need to recuse myself from that item.
So can we have a motion for item seven?
Move item seven, Madam Mayor.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
And one abstention. None opposed. And then there was a public comment speaker slip for item number three, which was read. It's the lease between MAG Aviation and the city of Santa Barbara. Mr. Widrow. Nope, you waive that? Okay. So that's not for anything. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar? Okay. Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so report from the finance committee, Mr. Francisco.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Today, the finance committee heard three items. One was a request for home loan funds. Another was a request for money for tenant-based rental assistance by the housing authority and by CAS Bronza. And finally, we reviewed some of the departmental changes and fees proposed for the coming fiscal year.
Thank you. And report from the ordinance committee, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are forwarding four items for council's consideration. An ordinance regarding prohibition of unauthorized traffic signs, establishing bus stop zones, one for the ordinance for curb marking and parking regulations. And the fourth item was to change the lottery system currently in place for establishing mooring occupants in the East Beach Bay to a first-come, first-served basis.
Great. Thank you very much. And item number 12.
Report on gender representation on boards and commissions.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City council members, Kristy Schmidt, Director of Administrative Services. As you know, we are in the midst of a recruitment for our board and commission, and wanted to take this opportunity to share a report that we have with you from the Santa Barbara County Commission for Women. It's called the Countywide Snapshot of Gender Representation on Appointed Boards and Commissions. The county commission for women advises the county board of supervisors on critical areas affecting women in the county. And one of their goals is to support and foster female leadership. So the commission recently conducted a analysis of gender representation on boards and commissions throughout the county, and we wanted to share with you the results, particularly as they pertain to the city of Santa Barbara. What the findings found is that we have good representation of women on our boards and commissions. You can see here, out of 203 seats that they looked at, 46% were held by men, 40% were held by women, and 14% were vacant. That lines up very consistently with the county as a whole, where out of 748 seats available, 39% were held by women, 49% were held by men, and 12% were vacant. Another finding of the board and commission, I mean of the report, was that women tend to have the greatest percent of representation on arts and humanities boards and commissions, followed by human services commissions. So I believe a few of the commissioners are here, and wanted to give them a chance to give their comments about the report and to answer any questions you might have. I believe we have Gina Fisher and Suzanne Peck, and one more person? I'm sorry?
Gail.
And Gail. So I'll have you introduce yourselves at the microphone. So come on up and welcome.
Hi, I'm Gail Titon Landis, and I'm a second district commissioner, and I just wasn't sure I was going to make it, but I did. And so I'm just here to introduce our first speaker, which is Gina Fisher, from the first district.
Thank you so much. And we're going to have to have you join our committee because you outlined our presentation perfectly. So you just got yourself a new job. So again, the reason for this snapshot was that the women's commission wants to promote women into leadership positions, and one way to do that, one vehicle to do that, is through boards and commissions, which I'm sure, you know, even, you know, you guys may have started that way, your careers, to where you are now. And so we wanted this to be a resource to produce an analysis, and then, and then also just like let all the municipalities know that what the data found, and that we're here to help promote when there's vacancies, and that there's different resources, and that there's huge opportunity to help get more women to positions of leadership and serve the community. And there were, it's all in the packet you received. There are a few limitations of the data, and one of the things that we did break out for the county and all the cities as a whole was if there were types of boards and commissions that women tended to fill more than men, if there were disparities within that, and by and large, and the data's all in the report, is that when it comes to like planning commissions and in city planning or county planning, that tends to be more dominated by men, and that when it comes to arts and humanities or healthcare kind of commissions, that's where a lot more women are weighted towards. And so we thought that was something that was important for everyone to take a look at, and maybe as folks get opportunities to fill vacancies, that is something that we could just have a little extra eye towards. And so my fellow commissioner Suzanne Peck has anything to add to that. Thank you so much for reviewing the report, and I wish you luck in filling those vacancies.
Hi, I just want to add a couple of thoughts and say we appreciate your attention to the report and realizing that there are a lot of openings. When I went on the site this morning, there are 40 openings. So, you know, it looks like, well, we're doing pretty well, 40% women, but there are 40 openings. So I know there's a deadline today at 5:30 for applying for openings, but just in terms of moving forward, we're here to help. We want to collaborate with you in terms of outreach. We've been connecting with the Women's Political Committee, Women Communications. We'd love to meet with Latina Leadership Group, or any other organization that you feel would be useful in terms of recruiting talented women to serve on boards and commissions. And the other thing we want to say, in addition to outreach and raising awareness, is to really pay attention to tracking the data. Because as I said, what I looked at this morning was true as of April 14th. We know the picture will change, but making your site current and attractive, I think is going to be important. The current video has Mayor Schneider nine years ago as a council member, and it's a different group of people. And the, and the video really is very white male-centric. So, you know, as I looked at, I thought, you know, we want, we really want to reach out to say that boards and commissions should reflect the population of Santa Barbara. And along those lines, anything that we can do to help, spread the word, or go out and make speeches, or partner with you to change the complexion and make the boards and commissions more representative, we'd love to help. So thanks for your we'd love to help. So thanks for your attention to this.
Thank you. Thank you. Well noted on the website, I guess. That's a good thing to know. We do have a public comment speaker slip. Did you want to wait till after that? Okay, Mr. Woodrow, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Having worked for the county before in my career and having been involved with various commissions many years ago, including the Women's Commission, the Human Services Commission, and others, I applaud them for the work that they do. But City Watch wanted to make a point that we care less about certainly one's particular biology, whether they're a man or a woman, in terms of these commissions and here on the City Council. We gladly support an all-women City Council if all those women certainly were in favor of some of the things that City Watch is in favor of, which is good business, good decision-making on a weekly basis, which you all do. So sometimes I just like to put a little perspective on it. I know the previous speaker talked about my white maleness, and I think that's okay. You can either be a white male, or you can be a Latina, or you can be, we can have, like I said, all women, and that's great. But once again, just trying to redirect our focus when we look for candidates to come on the City Council and all these important commissions, that we just focus on really the caliber of who they are, their experience, which many of you have brought to the table in running your elections and getting here. So that's our point. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hart?
Well, I just wanted to say this is really perfect timing with the deadline today for our recruitment for the boards and commissions. And as you noted, we do have a lot of vacancies. We always want people to step up and take this opportunity to serve. It's a great way to give back to your community and learn a lot about the city's organization. So I just appreciate the timing of this, your work to highlight this issue and bring it to our attention. It's probably something we should do on a regular basis when we do the recruitment, is to kind of give ourselves kind of a self-calibration about where we are in those regards. So thank you for bringing this forward today.
And then when you came to my office to present this, I appreciated, and I'm so glad we were able to fit this in today, just before we get involved with the interviews for our next round. As you all know, how we appoint board members and commissioners is different than the county or even the city of Galita, for example. It takes majority vote of all of us for each and every member, as opposed to an appointment directly from, for example, the district supervisor to his or her own district representative. So a little more collaborative here, and sometimes, and usually when there's four-three votes or things, it's mostly because there's so many great candidates and not enough seats, and there's great caliber, to get to Mr. Woodrow's point. But I think having the data here is really very helpful. But then on other occasions, we are desperately always looking for great candidates to fill positions, and we actually have some boards and commissions where they're not filled and people don't apply. So whatever we can do to help you help us recruit and have people put in applications for a variety of different boards and commissions, I'd be very grateful for that. I've been told by Kristi's predecessor, Marcella Lopez, that the city of Santa Barbara, I think, has more boards and commissions than even the city of Los Angeles. So that just shows how much civic engagement means, how important that is to our community. And I think we're a better city because of it, because of that civic engagement and process. Might take things a little longer to get done, but once it's done, you have the buy-in, I think, in a great, great way. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I was pleased that we were able to show this to everyone who watches City Hall and ourselves included. So appreciate very much. Any other comments or questions? And, okay, to be continued with the conversation, right? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number 13.
Contract to provide a work plan for desalination, subsurface intake, and potable reuse feasibility studies.
Mr. Hagmark, hello. It's been at least a week or something, right?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council members. Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, walking you through today a contract to get started on a work plan for the study of subsurface intakes and the feasibility of potable reuse in our future. Let's quick go. This presentation today is pretty short. I'm going to go through an overview, the approach, scope, cost, and schedule, and recommendation for today. On September 23, the City Council held a in-depth discussion about desalin as a product of that. The council directed staff to bring forward in the spring a discussion about moving forward with studying alternative intakes for desal and potable reuse. In January, we met with the Regional Board, and jumping on that opportunity, they actually made that condition part of our permit amendment. And they added two conditions to that. One, a due date for the work plan of August 31 this summer, and a presentation of the findings to the Regional Board by June 30 of 2017. The approach we've taken with this study, there's quite a bit to it, and it's going to take all of the time that we have basically through 2017 to get it done. So we've broken it down into three phases. The first one is the work plan development. Then we plan to come back for a Phase Two, where we will have a fatal flaw analysis of the alternative desal intakes. And during Phase Two, we'll be basically completing the potable reuse study. And Phase Three will be the alternative desal intake study, whatever comes out of the fatal flaw or survives the fatal flaw analysis. So the scope for this first phase, we will be working with Regional Board staff on development of the work plan. And kind of an interesting twist to this is the use of an independent technical advisory panel. When we were looking to put this together, we looked at a lot of different agencies who have tackled these very technical matters, and this has been a very successful framework, and able to get the public's input and address a team of experts that's put together that specifically this is their field of expertise and can speak to a lot of the cutting-edge issues that are going on. So we have employed, are going to be employing NWRI. They are a nonprofit group that provides these panels. We will not be part of that selection panel. NWRI will provide those experts to us. There will be one public meeting as part of this work plan development, and then eventually three more public meetings and the next two phases. The first phase, which we're here to talk about today, is the estimate with a 10% contingency from Corolla is $343,925. And the scope of that is to be completed by August. We would then come back in the fall for the fatal flaw analysis and potable reuse discussion, and that would be, at this point, roughly around $700,000. As we complete each one of these phases, it will help us, you know, solidify exactly what needs to be in that next scope. And then the final Phase Three, the alternate intake study, that basically would be doing soil borings, things of that nature, developing based on what survives the fatal flaw analysis for alternative intakes. So, final recommendation, authorize a contract with Corolla in the amount, total amount not to exceed $343,925 to develop a work plan for desalination, subsurface intake, and potable reuse feasibility studies, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
Great, and I appreciate that you're bringing this to us and the way that you have, and we've done a lot of work between when the council authorized the direction and then obviously going to the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Coastal Commission, and they've added this now to it, and they'll be part of the discussion, which I think is really, really helpful. And so came back pretty quickly after that, which I appreciate, as you've been asked to do. We do have a couple of public comment speaker slips, so Tom Woodrow and then Kira Redman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I've come to the disturbing realization, as I turned 50 last summer, that apparently I need progressive lenses. So I won't be able to look at you while I go over my notes. City Watch urges council to potentially table the staff's recommendation and instead work towards a comprehensive plan to solve this problem, a plan that looks at both a desalination, reclaimed water, regional storage, and partnerships with the oil and gas community to provide energy for a desal plant if and when one is built. City Watch also reminds council that there's a need to work regionally. Montecito Water District, as I'm sure you know, is embarking upon its own $500,000 feasibility study. Seems like a lot of money for Montecito to be doing and us to be doing as well. Galita and the county of Santa Barbara also need water, so it would make sense for us to work together. I know there has been some work together. So also, their consideration of economics, we could perhaps build a much larger, more potent desal plant rather than the less extensive one currently being studied. The cost of state water includes mandatory subsidization of the twin tunnels that, I believe that's what the governor has put in there, the Delta Twin Tunnels. And as such, perhaps it might make sense to simply say no to future state water and say, and pump that money into a bigger and more powerful, better desal plant than the one we're currently considering. Also, there's a possibility of partnerships with local oil and gas companies to have them pay for some of the energy needed to run these plants if we did decide to go with the bigger one. So what City Watch is saying essentially is that there are some alternatives. It's part of a more comprehensive plan, and maybe before we jump down the road to this particular desal project, we would consider those other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Kira Redman?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Kira Redman with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. I just wanted to express Channel Keeper's support and appreciation for the city's moving forward with this feasibility study and to offer our assistance. We've got other colleagues who've worked on similar feasibility studies in other parts of California, and we're here to help. And finally, just to let you know that the statewide desalination policy is before the State Water Board tomorrow, and assuming that they go ahead and adopt it tomorrow, which they may not, there will be some guidance in there regarding what criteria should be considered under the feasibility analysis that you might find helpful. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, it's back to the council. Any questions or comments or motion? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hagmark, in the phases to study, you have Phase Two includes the potable reuse study, and then of course also includes the alternative desal intake. And certainly, are those happening simultaneously or separately, or how's that working?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, those will be happening simultaneously, those two efforts. They're a group, they're basically different staff within Corolla, but they'd be moving forward with both of those items. And the technical panel would actually be holding a meeting for the potable reuse discussion and getting public input, and they'll be hoping to separate one for the intake discussion.
It just seems there to be a logical flow of trying the potable reuse before going to an alternative intake situation. I mean, they're two completely different ideas.
Correct.
One, certainly the potable reuse has the support of Heal the Ocean, and they've made statements to that effect, and seems to make a lot of sense since we already produce a fair amount of wastewater and do some processing on it. I mean, the logic, I understand the agreement supposedly we made, but there's a lot of money at stake, and there's a lot of time at stake. And with, also with the simultaneous studies going on, certainly we have an active one in Long Beach. We have these other ones going on at the same time, and certainly our geology is relatively unique, but that doesn't seem to be as big of a stretch when it comes to applying some of these other studies, yet we're going to go off another $2 million into this issue before we've built anything. And I sure would like to be careful and logical about the way we proceed in this.
Well, Rebecca Chaiman in this as well, but the potable reuse, to be clear on that, there's currently isn't any regulations that support direct potable reuse. So part of studying it is seeing what and how it would play a role in the long-term water supply planning. The indirect potable reuse may have an application, and that's why we're studying that, but I don't think it rules out the role that desalination would play.
Well, certainly, I know in the Middle East, there's a fair amount of examples of how it does work currently and how it's been produced. And I just think that thinking on our feet as opposed to just following the crowd on this might be well worth our attention as opposed to going off and doing everything in a vacuum rather than joining in with some of these other pieces of information that already, they've already tested the well to unfortunately beat upon to death.
The big cost, just to be clear, the big cost associated with the subsurface is really in Phase Three. So Phase Two, what they're going to be doing is ruling out any fatal flaws associated with subsurface. So the expenses in Phase Two are pretty minor compared to Phase Three, so there will be a discussion. We will be back to council after each one of these phases for a discussion and obviously approval of that next phase. So we can have a discussion about where we end with that, with Phase Two.
The phases themselves are not a fatale comple?
What's that?
Phases themselves? I mean, it's not predetermined we're going to go. I mean, we have to approve each one as they come up.
That's right. That's right.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. Part of what we're working against here is now a permit condition to complete the work within the scope. So, and as Mr. Hagmark pointed out, getting this scope of work done is going to be a challenge within the time that is allotted within the permit. So taking more time is usually less expensive. Unfortunately, given the timeline that's in our permit, I'm not sure that we have the authority to, or the ability to, stretch this out and look at it in a more stepwise manner.
I just hope that part of the study explains to me how a large campus for intake is more or less environmentally intrusive than a 36-inch pipe with a screen on it. I really am looking forward to that little story.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the staff recommendation. Obviously, we need to do this in terms of direction from the environmental regulators, but also it's the right thing to do for the marine environment, to fully look at subsurface intake. And Councilmember Rouse, I think there's scientists that are going to look at how subsurface is better than open ocean intake. Actually, I think the work has already been done. And for Mr. Woodrow, we've been visited by a group of people who are proposing powering the desal plant with solar. I appreciate, you know, your comments about working with oil and gas, but there's other ways that we can, and the desal plant uses enormous amounts of energy. So I make that motion, Madam Mayor.
That motion being A and B?
A and B, ma'am.
Okay, moved and seconded. Mr. Hart?
Well, I just think it's important to point out that the science on this is very site-specific, that we need to do the study to know exactly what our geology is, exactly what the options are for both potable reuse and the subsurface intake. And that's, you know, the commitment that we made to the Coastal Commission as part of the permit to activate the desal plant, but it's just good planning for us to know very specifically here in Santa Barbara what these means and what our options are. So this makes sense to me, and I appreciate the approach that staff's taking and the support from the community organization.
White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, yes, as was said, this is a condition of approval for the permits for the desal plant. So that's the driver behind this. And hopefully, if there is a fatal flaw in the intake system, we will learn about that before we invest the really big money in it. One piece in the staff report that I found interesting was that there is the Long Beach Subsurface Infiltration Gallery, which is in place? Is that, or is it just that the testing has occurred and it's feasible?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, I believe that it has not been determined to be infeasible, and they're doing further evaluation of the feasibility, looking at the construction phase feasibility impacts. I haven't heard, and it may just be that I haven't heard, the conclusion of that work yet.
Yeah, the product from that work is supposed to do out this summer.
Okay, and I'm sure that as we will be working on this these next couple of years, then we'll be hearing more about that, because obviously that's their step ahead, and also they haven't been deemed fatally flawed yet. So that will be a particularly interesting project to follow. And I'll be supporting the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I know a lot of people have been asking for this, and so this is a good milestone here. Obviously, we've passed a lot of milestones, and I've been asked a lot about the immediate need and then the long-term future. And I think this is a good today, and then tonight we'll be talking more about the immediate need, but here's the long-term future discussion. And just to get back to, I know Mr. Woodrow's comments about other agencies and what they're doing, the way, you know, we have our immediate drought response that we're doing under the permit guidelines that we have and the restrictions that we have, and it's true, I believe we do need a longer, bigger regional conversation about what to do as it relates to desalination in general, even when this drought ends. Because one day the drought will end, we don't know when, and then one day we'll have another drought. And so it is a cyclical nature, and we need to have that conversation of what is the role of desal, what's the role of potable reuse, what's the role of all sorts of conservation, what's the, what can we do on a regional basis? And I think the subsurface intake study in particular is going to be very informative in helping us determine that, and especially as it relates to other water agencies throughout the South Coast, because that's a big part of that discussion. And I- And I think what's going to happen is our study is going to complement, not compete with, the other studies that Montecito and Galita are also working on. And so when we have that regional discussion, because they are working on their own capacity and their own capability and their own water basins and what they have that they can study, and that's beyond the scope of our area here, and so all those things are happening now, which is great. So then, when we have that regional discussion, we'll have a lot of data and facts that we can use to figure out what's the best, most environmentally sound, as well as, you know, reliability in dealing with water supply within a drought and outside a drought. So I think this is a really strong step forward. I appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number 14.
Appeal of Single Family Design Board Approval for Additions to a Residence at 1215 East Cota Street.
Okay, this is an appeal. Just so everyone here knows the process of the appeal, we'll have a presentation by staff, and then I believe we'll have Mr. Sweeney, I guess, from the Single Family Design Review Board. Here, he can make any comments he'd like at that point. We might have some questions. And then the appellant has up to 30 minutes to present, give their presentation. You don't have to use the whole 30 minutes. Same with the applicant has up to 30 minutes. It'll go to public comment, and then afterwards, if there's any time left over from your 30 minutes, you may use that after public comment to deal with any issues that might come up at the end. Then it comes to council. Once it comes to council, it stays up here unless we have questions specifically for anyone of you out there. So that's just sort of the process as we go forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jaime Limone. Thank you.
Afternoon, council members. The appeal before you involves a single-family residence located 1215 East Cota Street. The property is located on the east side of the city, approximately four to five blocks north of Milpus Street. The property in question is a project that involves the demolition and reconstruction of a portion of the residence at the front of the property, as well as the construction of a new three-car garage and 300-square-foot accessory building to the rear. The current residence is about approximately 1,400 square feet. It's a two-level, split-level residence. The master bedroom that's to be reconstructed in the same location at the second floor did receive a previous zoning modification approval late last year. What's unique about this proposal, and I'll walk you through that design, is it does have a covered pass-through driveway. The proposal is located on 11,285 square-foot R2 lot, which is a very narrow, deep lot in this R2 zone. Here, the site plan depicts the proposed layout of the new improvements. As you can see to the rear of the property, this is where the structure, I believe, in question that the appellant is citing various impacts related to that new development. It's a one-story structure. Here you have the proposed lower-level floor plan at the first floor. To the left, you can see the pass-through that is leading to the rear new garage structures. And again, the reconstructed second-floor floor plan, which falls a master bedroom and bath. Here you have the proposed residence and elevations that are depicting the type of architectural style proposed to be on the project. And the accessory garage floor plan, you can see the three-car garage and the accessory building to the rear. This is the height of the proposed garage, which is approximately 12 to 13 feet, as you see it from the front. One of the concerns the appellant has raised is the height of the proposed garage is, as noted in the site visit, we explained to you that part of it is has to do with grading of the site and the desire for the applicant to be able to put some hydraulic lifts to be able to stack vehicles, which made the structure slightly taller. Here's the proposed landscape plan that's proposed, that was reviewed by the Single Family Design Board. So it will be a major improvement, given the current site conditions, which I'll show you shortly. This is the streetscape view from Cota Street. You can see the proposed structure location in the center of this photograph, that's existing conditions. Currently, the first floor has a one-car garage. Again, that will be opened up, and you'll see that the access to the rear, the yard, will be provided through this pass-through, which is currently pretty open. I do want to go through the appeal issues and try to give you some response from staff. The appellant has raised the question of the illegal two-story bedroom addition, and I did provide counsel earlier some response to some concerns raised about whether or not staff researched this issue, and we believe we have. The property was purchased in 2010, and a zoning information report was completed at that time. We did not determine any illegal construction to have occurred on the property. Part of that determination was that the fact that we didn't have original archived plans or building permits to reflect whether or not some of this construction was legal. However, we did look at the Sanborn maps that showed there to be a two-story structure in that close proximity to the property line, and that was some of the basis of why the zoning modification was approved to allow reconstruction of that area. The appellant has also questioned whether or not the Single Family Design Board abused its discretion with respect to allowing some direct window-to-window views and the loss of privacy. As outlined in the Single Family Design Board minutes, we believe that the issue of privacy impacts was raised late in the review of the process, and they actually cited that in their final approval or their project design approval, that the privacy impact issue was not raised timely, and they didn't believe there were any at that time when they did approve the project. Secondly, the issue of whether or not the legality of the addition should be weighed in by the Single Family Design Board. They also determined that it was not within their purview to determine the legality of structures. They left that to the staff. The appellant is also raising questions about neighborhood compatibility and impacts to private views of sunset. And then we also have this issue of exceptions to waive minimum design standards. There was a fire department waiver and/or actual variance in a Fire Transportation Division support for a waiver of the width requirements for access, and both the fire department transportation staff are here if you have any questions regarding those waivers and exceptions. The Single Family Design Board review did look at the issue of the three-car garage. They focused on whether the height was appropriate, as well as the actual building at front, which was being raised approximately four feet. They asked the appellant at one of the reviews to provide a streetscape elevation to show how that structure would fit in with the street, and found that even raising the structure was, would fit in with the block in question. They asked applicant to study lowering the roof heights, and the applicant came back with some rational arguments why that could not be accomplished to the degree that they the board had requested, primarily, again, the garage structure and needing the ability to be able to stack vehicles, and that would cause the garage to be slightly taller than a normal garage height. Again, the zoning modification approval did occur. No appeal was filed of that show decision, so staff believes that if there was a question about the legality of additions, that would be, have been the appropriate time to raise those issues and appeal that decision. The Single Family Design Board did grant approval and made the appropriate findings for this project. Again, staff's position is that we don't believe that there is any question about illegal construction. The privacy impacts, again, not raised as an issue at SFB meetings until late, and the board supported the garage location, even though the appellants were asking that it be relocated to a different location. You'll hear from the applicant as to why that was cited in the way it was cited. And again, we don't believe it's the board's purview to regulate private views and determine that appropriate work, issues that were raised. So we're recommending you deny the appeal, uphold the project design approval by the Single Family Design Board, and make the appropriate NPO findings, which are included in the staff report today.
Thank you. And I neglected to ask, let me do so now, if any council members had any ex parte communications outside the site visit or anything like that. I meant to do that earlier. Does anyone have that? No? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Mr. Sweeney, did you want to say anything at this point?
Madam Mayor, council, basically here to answer any questions, but just to reemphasize, Mr. Limone, could you, Mr. Limone, could you put the Cota Street photograph back up, please? You know, we're here again because we're dealing with this issue of private views versus public views, et cetera, particularly with second-story elements. If you look at that photograph and you've been out to the site, you can see the street has many second-story elements, including, I believe, the appellant's property immediately next door. So that's what we looked at. That's why we asked the applicant to come in with a street elevation, so we could understand how this fits into the fabric of the streetscape. And so part of our decision in terms of size, scale, and bulk of what we're looking at was relatively important, so we did analyze that. When it was asserted that a portion of the building might have been built without a permit, that's all we received, is an assertion. We never received any information that would have told us that that was done without permit, including staff's investigation. With regards to the unit that's proposed in the back, under our guidance code, I believe 17 feet 6 inches is the height for one-story structures. That's typically what we look at. This structure is at about 12 feet. We looked at that in terms of view corridor, the issue of the sunset quote-unquote component. But again, that's the issue of private views from private windows, and so we had to weigh that against the applicant's request to put in that building in the back. We also discussed the issue of pushing that building closer or attaching it to the main structure, but that really then defeated the purpose of having a home or residential area with having an immediate out, immediate adjacent outdoor living space, which we felt was pretty much what most people would like, is an immediate outdoor living space, which is what's proposed in the application. So I think that covers some of the bigger issues, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's to the appellant, and as I mentioned, I'll put 30 minutes here on the clock, there's Good afternoon.
Mayor, Council, Trevor Martinson, Happy Cinco de Mayo. I came dressed, and all of a sudden, I said, hey, where is everything? But first of all, I think that we have to understand, and I've heard the comments that have been made here, is that originally, when this project was presented to the city, the city fire inspectors, two of them, said, you need the 16-foot fire road to this particular area, because it was not per the fire code. Now, it's very important to understand that then, all of a sudden, Mr. Poirier, the fire marshal, decided to do this. I met with Mr. Poirier, and I said, what were your basis? The basis for any exception to that road, that 16-foot roadway, has to do with topography. It has nothing to do with what's on the property as a residence or whatever. But anyway, I wanted that to be very clear, and I think if you've read my comments, that that's what's going to have to happen, and that's why it was appealed to the Fire and Building Code Board. And I haven't heard back from them yet, but I'm assuming that we're probably going to hear this within about a month. But that's very important. It was started at the beginning, got sort of, you know, covered over, and I don't like that. I think that we have to protect our firefighters, and that's one of the issues that I have with this. Two, regarding what they're trying to tell you, that, well, this illegal thing, I should have told you about it. Twice, I came to the city in writing, telling them that I had contacted the county assessor's office. They had confirmed that there was never a second-story addition permitted for that structure. However, there was a covered porch, that was. You've got to understand that the county assessor's office is required by law to assess taxes on permitted structures. That's their job. Everything that goes through the building department goes to the county assessor's office. They review it, they send out a person to look at the property, and that's their job. I even, in my letter, mentioned that in the Sanborn maps, all of a sudden, in 1931, a little teeny spot appeared on this property that said, oops, second story. They don't report to anybody. The Sanborn Insurance Company is looking after the insurance agencies that are insuring these properties, so they have people walking the streets, just like an inspector. And if they see anything different, if they see a brick building, they want to make sure that it's noted on the Sanborn map. That's their job. And hey, you know, to me, it was built in 1924, someone said, we need another bedroom, and they popped it upstairs, probably for one of the kids, who knows? But this, two properties, my client's property and the property under appeal here, they were owned by one family for many, many years, and there's been a lot of things done, I'm sure, that wasn't quite up to the hoil. But let's not forget that we have to understand that when we decide that we want to add something to our building, that we have to go and get a permit, and that's exactly what's happened here, and we have questions. So I think that it's important that we don't depend on the ZIRs as the Bible. If you recall, the ZIR for the Ellen Canto was highly contested, and I found that they had said, oh, there's 10,000, 15,000 square feet more. When the assessor's office checked it, no, it wasn't there. So you've got to understand that sometimes ZIRs are not as impeccable as you would like them. People go out, they look. If I was a ZIR inspector, and I went upstairs and said, gosh, this ceiling is like about six, six foot two, and you know that the minimum ceiling height for many, many years, goes way back, seven foot six inches. I'm sure none of us got to go up. I did request that we, could we go up, and we never, nothing ever happened. But that would be a ZIR inspection that should have been reported. I don't think it was. Okay, I think that I would like to let my client come up and speak, and how many minutes have I put down?
It's right there.
Oh, good.
It's 24 minutes and 32 seconds left.
I've got a few more minutes. Thank you. Gosh, that's great. I don't have to watch you anymore. All right, thank you.
Is this working? Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Roger Goldtrap, and I'm the property owner of 1217 East Cota Street, adjacent north of 1215 East Cota Street. I am here to appeal object to the SFB's approval of application MST 2014-00310. I oppose the approval based upon the following. Number one, the Single Family Design Board did not apply the SFB guidelines in a fair and equitable manner to all parties during the review process. Two, the fire variance the applicant received was not granted on a valid basis. For example, a valid basis would require a terrain or other factor not under the control of the applicant per fire code 503.1.1. In addition, well, Mr. Martinson has an actual presentation on some of the code requirements that he'll probably get to in a few minutes. Number three, the ZIR completed in 2010 states the room above the garage as illegal bedroom. However, this is incorrect due to the fact that the room was never permitted, and ceiling height is substandard to code requirements for a habitable room. Any new construction or alteration to an illegal bedroom would be subject to current setback standards of six feet. Number four, the staff hearing officer, the staff hearing officer staff report dated November 20, 2014, shows it was prepared and initialled by Mr. Danny Cato and Joan LaCante. In August 2014, I had contacted Mr. Cato, seeking information on the process my neighbor had undertaken after a mutual friend referred me. In an email exchange, Mr. Cato told me that the applicant was a personal friend and preferred not to be involved. I will now address each item in a little more detail. Item one, the first SFB meeting on August 11, 2014 concluded with the board claiming that there would be no view obstruction as a result of the applicant's project if the... that there would be no view obstruction as a result of the applicant's project if approved. The second SFB meeting on September 8th, 2014 concluded with the board stating it is not in their purview to protect a neighbor's private view, even after submitting photographs that clearly outlined the view obstruction should the garage be constructed. City Council was presented with these same photographs during yesterday's onsite visit by Mr. Lamon and myself. The third meeting on March 23rd, 2015 concluded with the board granting design approval to the applicant. However, this meeting was administered under SFB guidelines with regard to the applicant's proposed garage height, but only after the chairman had been counseled by the city attorney to use the guidelines versus the board's own subjective opinions at future meetings. At no time during the March 23rd meeting or the two previous meetings did the board address the guidelines regarding a neighbor's view as outlined in the City of Santa Barbara Single Family Design, Single Family Residence Design Guidelines, pages 72 N through 74-N. These guidelines exist to assist an applicant during the planning stages to help avoid and/or mitigate the obstruction of a neighbor's view. So I'm confused, council members. The SFD applies the SFB guidelines to ensure the height of the proposed garage structure will meet design guidelines for the applicant. However, they will not use the same guy, or use the guidelines found in the same manual to assist an adjacent property owner, avoid or mitigate their potential view obstruction. Why do these guidelines exist for private views if they are not applied in the review process? Item two, the fire variance the applicant obtained from the fire chief is a major safety concern. The applicant has been approved by the SFB to construct a three-car garage with hydraulic jacks, which most likely contain hydraulic fluid, and accessory structure on the west side of the garage, which is the furthest point from the street. The accessory structure will most likely be occupied at various times, and the applicant or a different owner could build dwelling units on top of this garage or at other locations on the property in the future. If a fire were to occur, could fire personnel do their jobs safely and expeditiously by connecting fire hoses on Cota, opening a locked gate, dragging fire hoses over 200 feet, forty feet of which is next to the residence where trash cans are normally stored, locating occupants in an accessory structure or other building, contain the fire before it gets out of control, and now add some sundowner winds? City Council walked the property yesterday, and we all know this is a deep lot. What happens when fire personnel need a piece of equipment from the truck? Now add two more units on the property. The situation could get out of control very quickly with this variance that was granted by the fire chief, whom I understand is also a personal friend of the applicant. Fire codes exist for a reason, to fight a fire safely and expeditiously, to avoid major loss to a structure and/or surrounding property structures. This variance, from my understanding, would apply or run with the property so that any future development on this lot would continue to have limited access to fight a fire safely and efficiently. Item three, staff hearing officer meeting on November 26 involved an interior setback modification of less than six feet for the project. However, this was based on the assumption of the staff hearing officer that the room above the garage was a legal bedroom. The applicant was aware of the non-habitable room in a modification request letter dated October 22nd, 2014. Trevor Martinson also disclosed the illegal bedroom in his letter to the staff hearing officer dated November 25th, 2014. Betty Weiss, the staff hearing officer for the project, stated she read, had read Mr. Martin's letter at the meeting. Everyone was aware that the second-story bedroom was illegal or non-habitable. However, at no time did Ms. Weiss address Mr. Martinson's concern that the assessor's office did not have a permitted record of a second story. Since the non-permitted second story is the non-habitable room and new construction or alterations are proposed on this project, they would be subject to the current six-foot setback. Item four, I dealt with Mr. Cato a few years ago regarding some property information I was researching. Mr. Cato, Mr. Cato was more than helpful with his time, and I truly appreciated his efforts. I understand the applicant is a personal friend. However, I am just curious as to why he is, he was involved with the staff report when he stated he did not want to be involved in this project. In conclusion, some projects and sites are too constrained to allow them to be completed as proposed. How many variances is an applicant allowed? The more code exemptions and variances permitted, the more precedence are set to further stray from the original intent of the codes. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you. Is that concluding your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You can use your balance of the time after public comment if you'd like. Okay, you're at seventeen thirty-seven left. We'll go to the applicant.
Let's see if I can muddle through a PowerPoint presentation. I've never done one. A lot of the slides that I have are going to be redundant with-
You could state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Leslie Coloss, I'm the architect, and I happen to be the owner on the project, and I'm here representing my family. My family consists of Robert and myself and my thirteen-year-old son, who's not here today. So a lot of the slides that I have are going to be redundant with what you've already seen, and so I'll skip through those quickly and try to address some of the issues that have been brought up. Before I start, though, I'd like to say that I've worked as an architect. I've worked in the planning capacity here in town since my internship when I returned from Cal Poly. I grew up here in town, and I know many of the people that work with you in the planning department. Those consist of people like Danny Cato, Mr. Poirier. Whether they are personal friends or not, when it comes to business, is completely an entirely different matter. And I just want to say before I begin that everybody has conducted themselves in a very professional manner in terms of dealing with my project. There have been absolutely no sidebar dealings or anything of that nature, and the insinuation that keeps being placed by the, placed forward by the applicant and his representative is really inappropriate and frankly, very disconcerting to me in terms of my integrity as a professional. It wouldn't serve me to do that, and it wouldn't serve anybody else or their position. So I just want to address that very frankly at the outset, and thank everybody for being as professional as they have been working on the project. So this is the house, and you've seen that. Let's see if this is going to work here. This is now in my presentation, which is kind of who we are and why are we pursuing the project? Why are we even here for an appeal? I bought the house back in 2010. At the time, Robert and I had just met, and I didn't know if we would continue seeing each other or not. I bought this house really for my son and I. It was a small house. It was a beater. And I thought, hey, you know, I'm an architect, I know people in trades, I can fix it up, it's got a deep lot, he can play soccer in the back. It's an R2 lot. Maybe one day, if I win the lottery, I can build a little rental unit on the back, and worst-case scenario is I can't hold on to it, and I'll be able to dump it, and I won't, I won't lose because it's an R2 lot and it has some value. So I bought the lot, but things have changed. And here we are, and five years later, we're still together, and we're trying to figure out how to be under the same roof. Bob lives out of town. We looked at many different options in terms of how that could happen, and ultimately we concluded that for our son, this is a good choice. It's central to Robert's district that he serves in terms of his professional work. And it's right down the street from Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School. So we love the neighborhood. It's within walking distance to downtown. There's a lot of great things about it. We love our neighbors for the most part. And so that's why we're here, presenting the project today, and that's what's being appealed. When we started the project, we looked at it and went, what do we want? What do we need? And really, what we're proposing is really, it's just the minimum we need. We're not trying to max out our lot. This is an R2 lot. We could put three units on it. We could put things that we could, we could, we're at fifty-nine percent of our guideline FAR on this project. And, and it's a single-family use that we're proposing. So there's so much more development that could go on this lot. And when people buy property, they need to understand what their underlying zoning is and the fact that adjacent properties can be developed. And one of the misgivings that I have about this whole discussion that we're having is that perhaps Mr. Goldtrapp didn't take that into consideration when he bought his lot, which is a duplex. So anyhow, on we go. I was going to talk about the, I wanted to talk about how we arrived at our design. So the minimum requirement that we felt like we needed for our family was three bedrooms, two baths. We currently have a single bath, three bedrooms, one of which is in contention, and I will speak to later. I looked at the neighborhood, and I went, well, what does the neighborhood look like? The neighborhood looks like it has a lot of split levels that were built around the same time as our home, with a garage below them. The home at 1301 has the same condition, but they've built a carport in the front because they converted that two-story structure to a unit. So the split level nature of the home from the street is very contextual, including Mr. Goldtrapp's, that's directly next door to ours. So we thought that trying to retain that look from the street would really respect the underlying context of the neighborhood. But we needed to gain access to the rear of the lot, and it was like, well, how do we do that? This next slide is a little bit larger, so it might take me a minute to load it. So this is what we're proposing at the front, and we're really trying to respect the mass of the existing split-level home. We're squaring off the parapets, which tends to raise the height in its entirety for the home, but really, the stepped nature of the volumes is similar to the existing house. The rest of the homes in the lot, I mean, the rest of the homes in the neighborhood, the two, what I'm calling the south of us, which would be the State Street side of us or down Cota Street from us, those are both single-family in nature still. They have curb cuts on their left, which is typical of all of the parcels in the neighborhood. And they both have long driveways. 205 East Cota Street has a three-car garage at the back of it. I tried to point that out in the site visit yesterday to you. Very similar to what we're proposing, although it's oriented in a different manner. 1211 is a single-family unit, has a, looks like a two-and-a-half-car garage about midspan back on the parcel. And then the other units that I'm showing here have all been developed into really, for the most part, multi-generational, multifamily homes, where they've lost part of the front original home, I'm assuming, and then they've developed two or three units behind the original home on the northerly side of the parcels. So it's typical for there to be built form on the north side of the parcels, although the solar ordinance, I believe, may have gone into effect after a lot of these were developed because they would, a lot of them are two-story in nature, and I don't think that they would all comply any longer with the solar ordinance. So this is the project, and Mr. Lamon ran through it, so I don't really want to run through it and, and be redundant in that manner. This might be worthy of a, of a quick conversation here. Part of what we're dealing with in terms of height on the main residence is the fact that the existing garage is understructured, as well as the square footage above it. And so we're trying to come into compliance with current building codes. That's increasing some of the height of that volume. The rest of the height of the volume is for car clearance, and the bedroom above that we're calling our master suite is really diminutive. It's nine and a half feet in width, and we do want some volume in there in order to make that really feel like a reasonable space. So that's part of where we're getting volume in the rebuilt area. There's some of the detailing that was shown to the Single Family Design Review Board. So this is going to be a little bit redundant, too, so I don't want to bore everybody, but I just want to make a general point here. Mr. Goldtrapp and his representative, the appellant and his representative, have, one or both of them, have been present at every public hearing that we have attended. They have had a voice in this process. They have been heard. Just because your arguments against a project do not meet with an outcome that one likes does not mean you have not been a participant in the process. And I think there's a general impression that's being given by the appellant and his representative that their letters were not heard, things were ignored, and I simply don't think that was the case. I've sat in these public meetings to present while the board is taking time to read through these letters and consider the arguments. And I just, I think that's an absolute fallacy for them to suggest that that's the case. So that's really the point here. In terms of the argument that the existing second-floor structure is, that's in question that's being rebuilt, is illegal, I was actually thrown back a little bit by Mr. Martinson's argument. So I, I took a day off of work, spent a vacation day, and went over to the assessor's office and did a little background research. And what I found in talking to, I believe it's Ms. Sager at the assessor's office, is it was an interesting thing. First of all, I found out that the general public does not have access to anybody's assessor records, that I have access to mine, you have access to yours, but the general public should not have access to anybody's other than their own's. So I was a little bit, that was interesting to me because I wondered, well, how is it that Mr. Martinson has found out that according to the assessor, I only have a single-family home? I don't know. In any case, what I was told by Ms. Sager, who is the, the woman that actually assesses my office, she explained to me that the assessor's sheets, they call them the residential building record sheets, do not really have any way of expressing a split-level condition on a home. So what they do is these assessor sheets, they show subterranean or underfloor areas in green, which you're seeing on the left. Single-floor areas are shown in pencil or gray, and subsequent floors, like a second or third story, would be shown in alternate colors, red or something of that nature. My residential building record for my home is shown on the left. That's exactly how it reads if you go over and look at it. And what it shows, if you look at the calculations on the right and the square footage, which I've tried to delineate through colors here, is that they have calculated the whole area, including that, over the green square in my assessed square footage. So they recognize that square footage, and the home has been assessed, from what I can tell on this sheet, at least since 1966, with that amount of square footage over the top of the garage. So as far as I'm concerned, I have a legal second floor. The home has been assessed that way since 1966. So we either have a major bust in terms of tax assessment, or I have a second floor that's legal, one of the two. So that's, this is, this is speaking to the issue of whether I've got a legal second floor or not. This is a document that I received when I purchased the home from the seller, and this was in nineteen, it's a recorded document that's noted as, I think it's August of 1990. So twenty-five years ago, the home shows with the second floor on it. And again, the assessor's document shows back that it was, the square footage was calculated 1966. So it's been there for a long time. I can't speak to how long, but apparently 1931 it was shown on the map, too. This was the document, and perhaps Mr. Sweeney could speak to this if he wants to. This is the document that I provided to this SFD RB in response to their request for a streetscape study. And what I basically did was I took a photo montage of the street, and I penciled in a silhouette of each of the existing residences, as well as what I'm proposing, and then I pulled that away from the photo montage in the bottom, and it illustrates how the project would fit into the neighborhood. And basically, what you'll find is that the height of the tallest element on our project really sort of mimics that of the height of Mr. Goldtrapp's second-floor area, as well as the home that's already at 1205 East Cota Street. So it's really not in, out of context in terms of size, bulk, scale. The letter talks about views, talks about direct window-to-window views, and I think Mr. Lamon pointed this out in our job walk yesterday, but, or our site walk yesterday, but because the way that the, I should go back maybe to... Probably the best place to see this is here. If you look at the, the, what I'm calling the south elevation, the one that faces State Street, that is really what faces the most immediate neighbor that would be affected by the modification that's been approved. And the screen, the screening elements on the bottom, that's part of the drive-through, so there's no habitable area. That somewhat faces the next-door neighbor. But the upper area is far above roofline of the adjacent structure, and the neighbors who are directly to our south have expressed no concerns over the project. Carol and Paul called me this morning. They said if there was an issue, they'd be happy to come down. They're at Transition House cooking today, so they couldn't come down. But they have absolutely no issues with the project as proposed and have not voiced any over the course of all the design meetings that we've had. any over the course of all the design meetings that we've had. So there's no direct window-to-window views on the south. There's no alteration to the north on the residence, and the only fenestration that faces Mr., the appellant's property is at the accessory structure. There's a set of French doors, and there's no existing built form there. So I don't, I just see that statement by Mr. Martinson as being completely inaccurate. I don't even, it's erroneous, as far as I'm concerned. I don't understand what he's talking about unless he can show, show me what he's talking This is probably the reason that we're all here, although a lot of other issues have been brought up in the argument against the project. And really what it is, is it's Mr. Goldtrapp's or his tenants, since Mr. Goldtrapp doesn't appear to be living in the home now, his tenants from what he calls his B unit, their views. And so I've identified what I think are four potential views from his lot. The A view is directly out, it's in a, I guess it would be in a south-westerly direction or southeasterly direction. That's an ocean view that he gets out of his second floor. That will not be impeded or affected in any way by the project. The B view is over the top of my roof, and this is a view, these are photos that, again, were presented to the Single Family Design Review Board. And what I've done is, I don't know if you can see in the photos, but I've taken, I've taken a tape, and I've mimicked how high we would anticipate the addition being. And then I've hung a hat on there, a Surf Happens hat, and that's showing you exactly how tall the structure would be. And what you find is that really what we're building does not obstruct a view much more than the home at 205 East Cota Street. So I really don't see this affecting the view out of the upstairs bedroom of Mr. Goldtrapp's tenants', his B unit. The C view that I had identified is a roof area that's on top of Mr. Goldtrapp's house. It's an unsanctioned, I'll call it a roof deck, but it's not permitted as a roof deck, but it has been used on occasion as that. I don't think that anything that we're proposing is going to affect that view, because they're up perched at such a high level that it won't affect it. The D view will be obstructed to a certain degree. And what I did is, I took a solar diagram, and I, it's back on the, I took a solar diagram, which is up there on the left, and I did a study of that. And basically, what happens, I find that in the shorter days of the month, so from September to March, our proposed addition of the garage and the accessory structure will not impede his views at all. So for half of the month, his sunset views from his patio are not impeded. In the longer, in the longer days, the months with the longer days, it will be impeded to a certain degree, although if he adjusts his perspective and doesn't elect to just view it from his back patio, if he were to move further back on his lot, he will be able to get a view of his sunset. This is his sunset view. This was taken on April 15th, and as you can see, and perhaps you'll recall from your site visit yesterday, it's already marginalized by a large palm tree that's on an adjacent parcel, a large oak tree, and the built form that's at the parcel to the rear. So to wind it up, transportation concerns, I've heard over and over again that the project doesn't comply. The garages comply, the required space in front of the garages comply, the turn into the garages comply, the distance to the side of the garage doors complies, the garage doors comply. The only thing that is of issue in terms of transportation that Mr. Martinson continues to bring up is the fact that there are two small areas where the driveway is throated by the arches, and the transportation department has agreed that that's not an issue. The fire department variance that was given, was given in response to an agreement that we made to sprinkle both the main residence as well as the accessory structure. And my understanding is that the fire chief has discretion to make variances that result in commensurate fire protection opportunities. And so that's a consolation that we've made and a cost that we will incur in order to do that as part of the project. I think that's it. There were a couple of things that Roger or Mr. Martinson brought up that I wanted to speak, but too quickly. You keep talking about how my, my square footage is illegal. Mr. Goldtrapp still has contact with Mr. Stallings, which was one of the sellers. If, if he had a concern that that square footage was illegal, then my question is, why isn't Mr. Stallings here speaking to the fact that his mother added that square footage on it sometime and bootlegged it? Or, you know, it's, he has access to his sellers. He could have asked them to be here and speak to that, and they haven't done that. I never received a request for access from the appellant or from Mr. Martinson for access to the second floor where he could measure it. So that was, I, I don't know who he requested that of, but it wasn't me, nor did I receive that request through staff. He's saying that two fire inspectors were spoken with that require 16-foot width. I don't know who that was. When I first embarked upon this project, I knew that the fire issue would be one of the major hurdles, and I took a roll of drawings over to the fire station at Correo and Chapala, and I spoke with Mr. Austin, and I explained to Jim what my concerns were, and he immediately deferred the question to Mr. Poiret. He said, you need to contact Joe. He's the only one that can make these official decisions. And I contacted Mr. Poiret. I sent drawings to him. He reviewed those, and he responded. So I don't know where the 16-foot width and who these two fire inspectors are. I think that's really it. It's been difficult. I feel like a doctor who's performing surgery on herself, you know? I do this on a regular basis for other people. I have a lot more empathy after having gone through this. And I thank everybody for their time, especially staff. I never thought that a three-car garage and 150 square feet of addition would result in so many people having to come to the table with their time and energy, and I thank all of you for that.
Thank you. You have 7 minutes 47 seconds, should you need it. Any public comment, speaker slips? No? Okay. So any question? Well, we have Mr. Martinson, or do you have a question right now? Because we, I just want to say, Mr. Martinson, did you want to add anything before we bring it to council? Okay.
And if Mr. Lamone would put up the site plan, I think that would be helpful. The, the issue, and always, we're just talking about this. Unfortunately, we've tried to, and I think you read my, my comments, are you going to really try to go through that eight-foot wide, 33-foot-long, go all the way down here, get into your garage, and then I guess you're going to take all of your groceries up there? But this is the thing that I don't understand, the Bochi Court, but I know that all of the minimum turning radius requirements for this, they have to show, and on Exhibit 7, I show that, that they're going on the neighbor's property to make that turn, per the, per the code. Now, the fire department is very specific about this 16-foot-wide fire access, and Mr. Poiret made a mistake in granting it. And what's going to happen is that it's going to be required, and I know the state fire marshal is going to go along with this. Now, the thing that could happen, and you don't have to worry about anything, is if this development right here gets moved up here, they meet the 150-foot development, and it sure will be a lot easier to carry the groceries back to the house. So anyway, if there is any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Any questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the applicant, do you have anything else you want to say? Okay. All right. So it's to the council. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing I don't understand is the process that SFDB reviewed this while it, it, obviously it's R2, and it could have as many as three units, could be, the property size, anyway, is such that it could be, an applicant could apply for as many as three units on the property. Is that, isn't that correct?
Mr. Vincent.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the Single Family Design Board reviews properties that are developed with single-family residences. That's why this was before the Single Family Design Board instead of ABR.
Okay. So that, if a, so a single-family residence on a...
If this was a duplex...
C2 lot, that would, would still be SFDB that would review it?
Yes. If a lot is developed with a single-family residence and nothing else, or except for accessory structures to that single-family residence, the SFDB reviews the, the application. If this was an application for a duplex proposal, then the ABR would have reviewed it.
I see. Okay. All right. That's an interesting wrinkle. Well, shall I just...
Go ahead.
...put it on comments?
Yep.
All right. Well, this, it was, certainly, it was an instructive site visit to see a, to pierce back behind the facade of a busy set of street, of residences there, and you get back one, behind the residences, and there's an amazing amount of open space in the interior of that block. It really is, it's, it's quite something. And the R2 zone district is one where I imagine and expect that there would be planned a substantial amount of development. And by substantial, I mean bona fide urban downtown city development. And so it's that that I feel like, in this case, the, the, the appellant is actually, has the good fortune to see a neighbor who's proposing not to come in and, and make a three-unit condo project, but is, is seeing a neighbor come in with a single-family project. It's, albeit an idiosyncratic one, I, I get, I get that, that it's all the way back, three-car garage, those are unusual design criteria for, for this project. But it still is very low intensity for what the project, the property is intended for. And I frankly expect and would support much more intensive development on this site and on the R2, in the R2 district in general, for properties that, that aren't vertical or aren't really constrained by, by some other things. So I feel like this is a reasonable use of the property. The, the view impairments are modest for, again, for development in an R2 zone. So I am supportive of the project and would not be able to support the appeal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with Mr. White's observation that this is a relatively low-intensity development for this parcel. Another thing that I noted on our site visit the other day, and this is not to be at all derogatory about the neighborhood, which I think is a great neighborhood, but there are a lot of buildings there that were built almost 100 years ago, and a lot of them clearly have not been remodeled in that time. So anything that goes towards improvement, new buildings, new structures, remodeled structures, I think is a, is an asset to the neighborhood. I'm just, I'm going to go through the list that I made of Mr. Martinson's issues, and this does not include the thing that he submitted today. Really, it appears that the crux of his argument is about the supposed illegality of the second-floor section of the building. And the absence of a building permit from a building built in 1924 is not necessarily They're there sometimes, and they're not there other times. Things were not done in 1924 the way they're done today in the building department. So the mere absence of that is not evidence of anything illegal. The records going, just don't go back that far sometimes. So as far as I can tell, I haven't seen any documents from the appellant that said, you know, this was a single-story building in 1924 or 1931 or any time after that. When we went to the site yesterday, the building appeared to me to be very consistent with other buildings in the neighborhood, including the appellant's building. So it does not appear to me, based on anything, any of the evidence that's been brought before us, that that part of the building is an illegal structure. And so, given that, the decision to allow it to continue in the current footprint seems well within the discretion of the Single Family Design Board and the staff hearing officer. I would think that the, that the appellant would be grateful that the second-story part that we're talking about here is as far as possible from his structure. That goes to the next claim about the loss of privacy from windows. Again, the part of the building that we're talking about is as far as possible from the, the appellant's home, or rental, or whatever it is. And so the impact, I think, is minimal compared to a lot of the things that we see on appeal before council. And the issue of the, the French doors on the structure in the rear, of course, that's not facing anything on the appellant's property. It's facing an open lot. As far as blocking the private views are concerned, it, it seems to me, and again, I agree with Mr. White on this, the blocking is minimal, and as we know, there is no protection of private views in our zoning ordinance, period. This does seem to me to be a fairly minimal intrusion. And again, as Mr. White said, it could be a lot worse if he, if there were two condos, two-two-story condos being built in the rear, which easily, under the zoning law, there could be. That driveway will be narrow. I have a similarly narrow driveway at my house, built in 1931, and I occasionally scrape my car on it. It's unfortunate. That seems to me to be the biggest drawback to this project. That is a narrow opening. But again, one of the things that we've seen again and again, especially with some of these older lots, and remember, this is a 50-foot-wide lot. This is a narrow lot, 50-foot wide, 225 feet long. We sometimes have to make concessions to the reality of how these properties were laid out in the 1920s. They weren't laid out to the same standards that we have today. And this, this goes to the next point, the final point I'm going to talk about. And this is this supposed requirement for a 16-foot-wide entrance for fire to the rear. 16 feet would be a third of the frontage of this lot. There's absolutely no way that a third of the street frontage of this lot could be divided, could be devoted to fire access. Now, when we heard a few years ago from the fire department about the advantages of sprinklers, one of the things that we, we saw was the effectiveness of sprinklers in putting out fires. In fact, the effectiveness of putting out, of sprinklers putting out fires before the fire department gets there. So the requirement that the applicant have a completely sprinkled rear unit and a sprinkled house seems to me more than adequate compensation. And of course, no one would be moving a fire truck to the back of that property, anyway. They would still have to do whatever they did with, with hoses from the street. So it seems to me that the appellant here is actually fortunate in the relatively modest scope of the development that's being proposed here. I think the Single Family Design Board did its job. I forgot to mention the issue of Balkan scale. At most, I would guess, and I'm just guessing here, 10% to 15% enlargement of the view from Cota Street, enlargement of the, the mass of the structure, that's not, that's not huge. And so I think the Single Family Design Board did its job, and I think that we should deny this appeal.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to ask Fire Chief about the, the requirement, I think Mr. Francisco covered it, that it was mitigated by the fact the sprinklers are going to be put in the building. So I guess, yeah. Okay, thank you. I guess what amazed me the most was the, the aerial photo of the neighborhood, because of all those lots, which are very narrow but very, very deep, I think most of them, except for maybe a couple of them, seemed... for maybe a couple of them, seemed to be developed all the way to the back. So as I look at this project, I think it's a relatively humble project for the, the lot itself. And it, of course, includes a man cave, which all of us that are in relationships are very envious of. But I also believe that, and I was chatting with Mr. Martinson about just the architect itself and the style of that time, which I'm not a, a huge fan of, but it seems to me like the applicant has gone out of her way to try to maintain and retain that flavor to fit into the neighborhood so that the, the street itself, the street effects are minimal at best. I think that enhances the neighborhood, but it doesn't change the neighborhood, at least not hourly. So it sounds, it respects the, the flavor and the architecture and the intent of the time. So it is an unusual application to have this long driveway and this, this garage in the back. But certainly, I think that, given what that lot could be and the heights and elevations that could be developed there, I'd have to agree with what Mr. Francisco and Mr. White said. I think the, I think the appellant is actually fortunate to have this particular development be the development that's going on next door because that property does, in fact, beg to be redeveloped. So I'm going to be denying the appeal.
Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask if, I, I heard the appellant say that someone, a new owner could come along and add something to the top of the garage or the accessory building. Is that, is that true, Mr. Lamone?
Councilmember Maria, there, there are abilities to add additional units, and that could involve a second story on the accessory building as long as the setbacks are maintained for that zone.
Okay, okay. And then, Mr. Lamone, while I have you there at the microphone. So it, it seemed like there was some talk yesterday that, that the, that the new buildings in the back, the garage and the accessory building were, that they were going to be three feet lower. So was, was there talk about, you know, burying it, not digging out a whole new basement, you know, type situation? But do you see what I'm saying? If, if the neighbor's concerned about the height, was, is there a way to make it lower?
I don't recall, Councilmember Maria, a specific request by the board to lower it with grading as the solution.
Right.
I do know that they questioned the height and asked that the architect's study methods of, of reducing the height. But when they discovered that there was this idea of stacking the garages, I think they, they essentially relented with the existing height. And, you know, when you start lowering the topography, it does create additional issues with landscape, not landscaping, but drainage issues in creating, retaining well systems. But I believe there is some lowering that will occur with this proposal.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, is it okay if I ask the Fire Marshal to come up? He was saying a few words off-mic, and there does seem to be some concern about the fire issues and perhaps for the neighbors all living there on the east side to know that this has passed muster with our fire officials. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Poirier.
Sorry, thought it was on. This variance is actually fairly standard. The distance variance is from the code. They quoted the right section, but they didn't give you accurate information on, on exactly what the code allows. The code does allow me to make reasonable variances, even for something as simple as a difficulty that the applicant has with a site constraint, which this would fit into. So the, it is within reason to consider that, you know, the, the variance at large is, is something that, you know, we would consider on a normal basis. So it's not unusual at all. Secondly, the, the sprinkler issue in the back, typically with what we would call a U-building, a utility building, you can go up to 5,000 square feet to this day without sprinkling it. Now, in this particular case, it has, as Councilmember Rouse referred to, a man cave in it. And the building division, when it got to the purpose of, of actually issuing the building permit, might say, well, because of this, this additional accessory unit, it, we, we might want to call it an R, which is a residential unit, as opposed to a U. But we hadn't gotten that far along in, in the process yet. And it really doesn't matter. From a practical point of view, this building was going to be sprinkled whether or not it ended up being a utility building or whether it ended up being a residential building. But from a common sense point of view, and as I'm sure a lot of you know, there are very few people in this city who care more for firefighter safety than I do, from a common sense point of view, there are two different ways we can approach this. We can actually advance hoses through the garage or through the pass, pathway on, on the, on the driveway side. But we also required that the, the path on the right-hand side or the north side of the residence be kept open so that we can advance hoses in that direction, too. And in that way, you know, we, we have ample access. We can deploy 270 feet of pre-connected line off an engine as easily as we can deploy 150 feet. So we're not concerned about this variance at all. It's something that we wouldn't issue to any applicant. And, and I, you know, I, I don't believe that this appellant seriously believes that we have a fire safety issue here.
Okay, thank you so much. So now the question of, of fire safety has been settled. Thank you, thank you. So I, I'm falling, I must deny the appeal as well. But I'm not going to sit up here and, and say the appellant is fortunate and you should feel lucky that they're not building a whole bunch of stuff. I'm, I'm sympathetic to you because I, I hate change myself, you know, and, and so, and your yards are so beautiful and I, I just really appreciated, you know, the, the precious little open space that was back there. And, and I totally support your project. I love it. I, Councilmember White called it idiosyncratic. It's like you're doing what you need for your lifestyle. Cool, good. And sorry for the appellant that there's going to be changes for you. That, that's all. And, and what makes me okay with this, too, is there's that, that space in the middle where there's not going to be any building. So I'm sorry to disappoint you. I'm going to deny your appeal. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could I chime in just, just one point here that Councilmember Maria mentioned that the fire safety issue has been settled? And I just wanted to comment that, that the appellant has filed, filed an appeal to that decision, and that will go through a separate appeal process that, that hasn't really started yet. So that, that hasn't entirely been settled. And if, in fact, that were found to be in error, then that would require that this plan be revisited. So, and, and it would require a re-review of the plans before the Design Board. So I want to get that.
Thank you for that clarification.
I stand corrected. Thank you, Madam City, City Attorney.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I think the staff did a good job of addressing all the issues raised by the appellant, and I'll be voting to deny the appeal.
I think a lot of the issues I was thinking of was already brought up, except also to say, actually want to compliment the design. I think, I didn't realize you were the owner and the architect. And when I was looking at it, I, I thought this will be a nice added, different addition in very unique in its own way, but complimentary at the same time. So I just wanted to compliment you there. But a lot of the issues that I would have brought up have already been brought up, so I don't need to do it again. Okay, so we do need a motion. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that the council deny the appeal of Trevor Martinson, per the staff recommendation.
Second.
And, and Madam Mayor, could I chime in one, one more? This is a de novo hearing, so if you're going to be denying the appeal, then you also need to be approving the Design Board review and making the findings required for the neighborhood preservation. And there, there are some suggested findings laid out, the seven findings in your staff report. You can change those, but the basic findings, the seven that you need to make are contained here in the report. So you do need to make those findings.
Okay, Mr. White.
I would, I would add the seven findings to my motion.
All right. Mr. Francisco, I think you seconded.
Right.
Okay, so we know what the, what the motion is? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, so we gonna have any Councilmember Committee assignment reports? We don't have to. Going ones. Okay, so we will recess until 6:00 P. M. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the City Council meeting. If we can have a roll call, please. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss. Maria.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White. Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, so move on to item number 15. Declaration of Stage Three Drought Emergency and Adoption of Stage Three Water Use Regulations and Development Restrictions, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring a stage-three drought emergency and establishing water use regulations and development restrictions to be effective during a stage-three drought emergency. Okay, Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, here to talk about the stage-three declaration. We've been talking about, leading up to this monthly, so I will be doing a drought condition recap, a status of city water supplies, stage-three water use regulations, stage-three development restrictions, and recommendations. Presenting with me today is Ms. Ward, our Water Conservation Coordinator, and Ms. De Busque, our Senior City Planner. So just recap, the city was quick to react to this drought. I believe we came out quick last year implementing regulations, implementing rates that helped encourage our community to respond. And I believe we've stayed one step ahead of the, the state on most of this drought and continue to be one step ahead. With this, we are recommending the stage-three. And why? Well, we're now looking at the, at the last four years being the driest on record by 20 percent. That's pretty significant. We've had some pretty good droughts come through here. So to say we've crushed the last major drought by that much is pretty significant. We do have a rain event planned for this Thursday, which is supposed to be pretty minor, but there is nothing significant that's going to change the current conditions we're in. As you can see, we ended the, the year with rain totals averaging about 45 percent, 40, 44 percent for our, where we basically get the majority of our groundwater, our surface water supplies in the back country with Gibraltar and Lake Kachuma. This graphic here, I've included the county put together to kind of illustrate the last drought, which we all somewhat can remember in 1987 to 1990. This drought is 20 inches of rain drier over that four-year period. That is significant. And the drought of record that this, this one has kind of superseded, the 1948 to 1951, this drought was, has been 10 inches drier. So significant numbers, this is breaking records all over. Gibraltar currently at 13 percent of capacity with just over 700 acre-feet of water in it. There's probably 400 acre-feet of actually usable water that we'll be bringing down from there. So basically, the reservoir will be dry this summer. Lake Kachuma, 27 percent of capacity at 53,000. Positive side, we've been asking the community for conservation, our 20 percent target, and the community has been achieving a 22 percent on average, which has been fantastic. It is buying us the ability to have some decisions as we move forward. You know, we have some wiggle room. It's certainly where we need to be. I'm going to take a little time to go through our water supply strategy. I've been bringing this up, and I'm going to go through it in a little more detail. So we've been basing this on no more reservoir inflows and no state water. And basically, that's kind of what we, we saw this year. Kind of going to zoom in on where our supply strategy, looking at year four. And a critical part of meeting our supply strategy going forward is a 25 percent target from our community. It's really going to be critical. The state, based on the new state regulations, we're actually, because our community has done such a great job conserving, we're actually only required to conserve 16 percent. We're recommending to the council today to move that goal to 25 percent. It really helps to, really helps with our supply planning to ensure that we have adequate supplies going forward. We have a lot of variables still to work with. We have been pursuing the purchase of supplemental water for this year and have been very successful. This has made a huge difference. This having the state water pipeline to be able to import this water has been critical. But as we noted this year, we came very close. We were, we were successful in securing water for next year, but it was close. There was a lot of folks out there trying to buy water and it just wasn't available. Northern California did not have the water available for sale. And so I feel very fortunate in saying we have sufficient water supplies right now to get us through 2016. But there is nothing on the horizon that looks to be improving in this, in this situation. We do have a small amount of state water, about 600 acre-feet. Again, we're glad to have everything we can get, but it's pretty minor at this point. Groundwaters, you can tell we're going to be depending heavily on our groundwater coming up. And we've invested quite a bit into our groundwater. It is a very limited supply and, but it, for the next few years, it's going to be playing an important role. What we don't show here is that in year eight, if this drought were to continue on, our groundwater supplies would be dropping off pretty quickly because there isn't, it is a finite source. Gibraltar, what we're seeing here basically is the inflows that come into Mission Tunnel. It's basically like a horizontal well, so that's, we're not anticipating any significant water coming from Gibraltar any longer. Kachuma carryover, this is where conservation has really played a role and allowed us to take this water that we've gotten in Kachuma and carried over from year to year, and this is what really is going to carry us forward. And this is an unprecedented situation here. Kachuma, our entitlement for Kachuma, this is the last year we will have an entitlement. Come October, we will not get a new entitlement from Kachuma. It's the first time that's ever happened. And we're fortunate that we've been able to carry over so much water that we'll have something coming from Kachuma for next year. And then, of course, recycled water. Recycled water plant is in construction or renovation, and that facility will be online this summer. We do have the Valverde well that has been essential in helping to shore up water supplies, but the recycled water plant coming online will be critical, obviously going into the future, to help us meet those, those demands. And then, of course, desalination. We will be talking about this in June, but it's clear on here, it makes up a huge part of year six in helping us to meet demand and minimize the shortfall. Even with the desalination plant coming online, we still have a recognized shortfall of 1,400 acre-feet. We have several options to help deal with that. And we could, new regulations, maybe we'll be successful at buying some water on the market. But at this time, there is still a recognized shortfall even with D-SAL coming online in year six. So recapping, I'm recommending a goal of 25 percent for stage-three. Revenue impacts from that decision, moving from 20 percent, which we're currently at, to 25 is about a $5 million impact in revenue. Recognize that. We are working internally to reorganize and see what capital we can further defer to make the rates that have already been adopted work in, in, with the new D-SAL plant if that decision is made. And so we're looking to kind of line us up so that we can take on this additional conservation. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ward.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Madeline Ward. I'm the Acting Water Conservation Coordinator, and I am going to be discussing the proposed water use regulations. So we wanted to keep you updated with the state regulations. As you know, Governor Brown issued an executive order on April 1st. Since then, the State Board has released additional regulations last week, and today they are currently debating these regulations, and they're anticipated to be adopted either today or tomorrow. We will keep you apprised of the situation. We have tried to incorporate all of those regulations in our regulations, but if there are changes, we may need to come back and modify ours. As Mr. Hagmark mentioned, the conservation standard for the city is 16 percent, and that is a 16 percent reduction in our demand as compared to 2013. And that was calculated by the state based on our residential gallons per capita per day. So in the state, that varies from generally 8 percent of a conservation standard to 36 percent. And we basically landed in the 16 percent conservation standard. But as Mr. Hagmark mentioned, we are going to be asking our community for 25 percent. So our proposed water use regulations, we put them into categories to make it a little clearer. The new regulations that we are proposing are no potable irrigation during and within 48 hours after measurable rainfall. This is something that our free rain sensor program will really help with, as well as no potable watering of turf and public street medians. And as mentioned in the last council meeting, we only have one of those in our city limits and in our city water service area. The modified regulations include that hotels and The modified regulations include that hotels and motels must display the option of having towels and linens laundered daily, and that is in each guest room that they must display that, and we do have free cards to signify that. Also, we wanted to include residential, large residential fountains and our prohibition of large 25 square feet or larger water surface fountains to make it equal across all of our customer classes. And the last modified regulation is to specify the frequency of pressure washing for some of the preventative maintenance of buildings that are happening around town, such as awnings, windows, and solar panels would be once every three months, and washing of building surfaces would be once every 12 months. We also needed to modify our definition of runoff to make it comply with the state definition, so runoff onto private walkways, parking lots, or parking structures will also be prohibited. Our prior definition just included if water was leaving the site to which the water was served, so basically leaving the property, but now we do have the authority to prohibit against irrigation running onto private walkways. We do have an additional modified regulation for car washing, and that is that commercial car dealerships must limit washing their fleet or inventory vehicles to no more than once per week per car, and that is using a pressure washer. And also that service cars, when they come in for a service visit, can only be washed by specific customer request. We do have existing regulations that everyone will be familiar with, such as hoses needing to be equipped with an automatic shut-off nozzle when they're in use, and the limit on time of day that irrigation can occur. If it's an automatic system, it needs to be after 6:00 PM or before 8:00 AM, and if it's hand watering, it needs to be after 4:00 PM or before 10:30 AM. In addition, swimming pools and spas need to be covered when not in use, and draining and refilling of a pool is generally not prohibited unless an exception has been given. And now I'll turn it over to Ms. DeBusk.
Thank you. Allison DeBusk, Acting Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. And there are three development restrictions that we are proposing as part of the stage three declaration, and those include a suspension of building permits for new swimming pools. And this would apply to pools that are not already in either the planning process or building and safety for review. Spas of less than 500 square feet would be exempt from this limitation. The second one is irrigation of landscapes outside new homes and buildings must only be by drip irrigation or micro spray. And again, projects that have already submitted for a building permit would be exempt from that regulation. The third one is that for projects with required new landscaping, there would be a mandatory deferral on the installation of any plants that are not water-wise. And again, this would only apply to projects that have not yet submitted for a building permit. The fourth item that's listed here is a voluntary option for anyone that would like to defer the installation of their landscaping during this drought, they would have the ability to do so. So that's a new option that would be available to new projects.
So in summary, our water supply situation has not improved. We're anticipating water shortage is projected for next year. Unprecedented drought conditions are amongst us, and we're working to secure and preserve our water supplies, and we do need to increase our citywide demand reduction target by 25%. So we are recommending the adoption of a resolution declaring a stage three drought condition and establishing water use regulations and development restrictions.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hagmark, when we talk about the baselines and demand use reductions, and we're going to say 25%, I'm still kind of searching for that. We talked about 2013 being a baseline, and we talked about where are we now and where are we trying to get to, and what's that last increment? What's that going to take?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we believe that the rates that have already been adopted are certainly going to influence our customers and their conservation efforts, and we feel that we're right now at about 22% is where we sit. And so there are some conflicting things. When we've been talking with the council, a lot of the times, we, and I have some slides where I sometimes refer to both, but we refer often to our average demand, and we're looking to, because that's how we're planning, doing our water supply planning, is off our average demand, and so we were looking for a 25% reduction from that. The other reduction that we're reporting to the state, they chose 2013 as this baseline. And so when we report, they're going to be looking that we're 16% below what we used in 2013. So that's the two baselines that we use, but for our supply planning needs, we need to see 25% below our average demand, annual demand.
So we don't want to have a community-wide high five just yet, but we're doing pretty well.
We're doing fantastic, yes.
Okay. When you mentioned the fountains, when we had the discussion before, there was a difference between a fountain and a fountain that supported fish, for example, the koi pond. Mr. Hotchkiss is not here, he was the turtle and fish guy. Is there still some delineation between that, a fountain and a koi pond?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, there is still the exception. If the fountain supports aquatic life, it does not need to be turned off.
That story's going to do well. Okay, very well. And the non, excuse me, the car dealerships, which happen to be concentrated in kind of one area. I know that for the golf course, the non-potable supply goes in that direction. Is there non-potable available in that area for those guys to use? Or is it possible for them, for example, to use non-potable for washing of cars as opposed to using potable water?
Councilmember Rouse, currently, the recycled water system does not extend that far. I believe that they actually use a pretty highly-treated version of water so that it doesn't spot on the cars, so I'm not sure if they would want to invest the money to then highly-treat the recycled water to do that. They, many of the current auto dealerships have restricted washing fleet vehicles to once per week, and some of them, the feedback we heard is that if we had a resolution that required it, then they would be allowed to, but right now, the car manufacturers are sometimes requiring them to do it more frequently. So we've had a good dialogue with the car dealerships in terms of once per week being a reasonable alternative for them.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, would you go back to the slide that had all the different recommendations along with the building permits and swimming pools and whatnot? Are there percentages or usages assigned to each one of those things as they would pertain to use? So for example, the significance of a swimming pool versus landscape irrigation? The kind of, what would help us make a cogent decision, if we had a triage list to choose from, what would make them, or are we going to get the biggest bang for our buck? Because what we don't want to do, we don't want to do symbolic moves, we want to make real moves. So I'd like to find out what the real impacts are.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, we did do some estimates of the amount of water that would be associated with each of these, and they are relatively low, just to be honest, that they are. In terms of the suspension of permits for pools, we estimate that that would save approximately 1.8 acre-feet per year. We get about 14 new pools per year, so we're talking about approximately 14 pools. .015%.
Okay.
Much less than 1% of our drought supply. And in terms of, we have not calculated changes that would be triggered by the limitation on the irrigation. My understanding is that most of the projects that we see currently satisfy this requirement. They are irrigated with drip or micro spray, so we don't anticipate that being a major change, but that's one of the regulations that the state is requiring us to implement. And then for deferral of the installation of the non-water-wise plants, we are at a very rough estimate of approximately three acre-feet per year, which is about .02% of the annual drought water supply.
Because as we've had these presentations, we've had more than one, the general feeling is that landscaping is really where we get our biggest savings. Is that?
Madam Mayor and Commissioner Rouse, that is correct. However, these would only be applied to new developments, and those projects are already required to have landscape plans that meet our water conservation requirements, so less bang for the buck in that sense.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions about rates. Do we have the ability to, as I recall, the tier three kicks in at unit 16, is that right? Am I correct in that?
Sounds, that ballpark, yeah.
Is it possible to change that? If we change that, do we have to go back and do a Prop 218 noticing and all of that?
Yes, that's correct.
How about the meter charge? Is that also something, unless you were saying it's a $5 million issue? If we were to try and adjust those numbers, do we have the, and there is a limitation on what we can put into our meter charge, is there not?
That's correct, Commissioner. It's 30% of our revenue. No more than 30% can come from our fixed rates.
And where are we with that? Where do we plan on?
We're right at 30%, I believe it was like 29, 28%.
We're already heading toward the max, at least close to the maximum on that.
That's correct. We can adjust our rates down, but we cannot go any higher than what was noticed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
To be clear on the first one, the building permit suspension for the new swimming pools, for pools not already in the review process, the review process would mean, which part of the review process? How early are we talking about?
Madam Mayor, for the pools, it would be a project that has been submitted at all, so initial submittal for either design review or any planning approvals, so any submittal would count.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
So when we first raised rates to get the first increment of conservation, we got about a 20%, 15% kind of reduction. The new rates in comparison to that first drop or increase in rates, what are they, about the same, more?
As a percentage of more, but there's a hardening that starts to occur as you start to get into that. But yes, we did see basically a 22% on average reduction in water usage based on those rates that went into and the regulations that went into effect.
Understanding the hardening thing makes it more difficult for the next increment of conservation, totally get that. Are you at all concerned that this next raised increase in rates is going to push us far beyond the 25% reduction and then cause a big financial problem? I mean, as it is, 25% is a $5 million revenue reduction overall, approximately, and we're going to have to address that with another rate increase, I assume, to accommodate that. And the concern is, do we go, you know, do folks really hit the brakes and cause a big financial problem like some of the other, like Montecito's experiencing?
Councilmember Hart, I have to admit that I worry about a lot of things, and that's one of them too, is balancing that, carefully balancing that conservation target with our revenues. And so, you know, we've done our best to try and put this together, but it's hard to predict what the behavior, you know, where will the conservation come from? If we get the conservation from tier one, then it's a very limited impact. If we see significant conservation in tier three where the water prices are a lot higher, that's where the revenue impacts really start to show up significantly. So we'll be monitoring it closely. Our approach to this is that we're going to be reviewing our rates every year because there are so many things changing with our water supply plan and with conservation. So I think it's something that we're actively going to be talking about and reviewing and meeting monthly to discuss. So it is something that we're watching. We're taking a careful look at our capital budget to see, you know, what could we shift around, at least delay until the later part of next fiscal year to give us the opportunity if the revenue really isn't coming in to adjust.
Was there any data through the rate study or anything? Is there any information that's historical, anything, any of their best practices, or are we just literally pushing the button and seeing what happens?
Well, we did ask our rate consultant, Raftellus, to do their best guess at it based on, you know, cost changes, and so it's their professional opinion, but it is still a guess.
Is there any comparison to the other neighboring jurisdictions? I guess we're not, we're in a little different position rate-wise to them. For example, what is Montecito's price structure and their rations? So that's not comparable.
Yeah, and their approach is different. I mean, their tier one is 25 units, so it's, they just have a very different demographic and different usage there, so it's really hard to draw any comparisons to any of our neighbors. They're just very different.
I guess the reason I'm asking this is, you know, these things are largely symbolic, truly. If we added up the amount of acre-feet of water involved in all of these things, you know, I think the pool one, not to use that as a great example, but that is a thousandth of a percent of our water use, and all of these things are probably in that order of magnitude, I think. Aren't they? Anybody, what would be the most significant of all of these things that we're proposing to do? Which one would be the most significant from a projected water savings standpoint?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I would say yes, that we actually, these regulations that we've put together for stage three are actually pretty mild, and why? Because the community has been so responsive thus far. And so we felt that, you know, we are moving into our highest stage of, you know, water awareness, that we did not need to throw a bunch of regulations. We certainly have, we discussed them. There are a lot of other regulations we could have thrown in here, but we feel that with the rates that are already planned, minimal regulations are really necessary at this point, and so it's really at the discretion of the council if we've gone too far with even what we've proposed so far.
Okay, well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the people of Santa Barbara have done an incredible job in terms of conserving water in general, and it seems to me that the, some of these proposals, as Mr. Hart just pointed out, are pretty minimal, and especially minimal in relationship to the opportunities for conservation at large. So is it true that, is it true that the opportunities for conservation really lie in what we do with the general population and not these specific issues? And what I'm getting at here is something we've talked about many times before, and that's avoiding going for symbolic wins and going for things that really achieve something in terms of water savings for the city.
One of the things that we struggle with is we obviously get a lot of people that call in and complain about certain activities that are going on, and, you know, pools being one where they'll say, well, God, if you're letting pools go in, why do I really have to cut back on my water use? To them, it's a symbol that there's plenty of water going on, and so it is a difficult one. It doesn't add up to a lot of water, but symbolically, it sends this message that we have plenty of water to go around, that we can fill pools and build new pools.
Right.
And so that's really kind of the challenge at hand we get, and I'll probably let Ms. Ward speak to it, she receives most of those calls, but it's just, you know, it's the same thing with the fountains, you know? We're sitting here celebrating fountains, we're celebrating the water splashing, it makes it look like, oh, we got plenty of water going around, we can do this. So it sends a weird message to those folks that were really asking to, you know, cut their shower short, let their lawn go, you know, and then, and yet we're doing other things that are kind of counterintuitive or appear counterintuitive.
And Councilmember Francisco, I just wanted to add that many of these regulations in terms of water use are state mandated, so they are small, and we aren't expecting to achieve amazing water conservation through them, but they are something that we do need to implement.
Okay, so my question is, I believe that Santa Barbara has been performing incredibly in terms of water conservation for a very long time, really since the last drought, at a much, much better rate than most of the state of California. So we've already achieved a lot of reductions, and this 16% number speaks to that, because the rest of the state's being asked for 25%, we're only being asked for 16%. What I want us to do is be realistic about what we have to achieve to meet our own goals. And I want to avoid, and I understand, I mean, water fountains flowing and people putting in new swimming pools, that could look like a problem to the neighbors, but what I want us to focus on as a council, as a policymaking body, is what really affects the big picture for water in Santa Barbara. And so what I want you to tell me, which of these things do we have to do to fulfill a state mandate, and what things can we do in terms of what we already know we can accomplish with the people of Santa Barbara and their goodwill to meet the state guidelines?
In terms of development restrictions, the drip and micro spray is required by the state. That may be modified. the state. That may be modified. As I said, they are still discussing it currently, probably while we speak. And we are expecting in the next couple of weeks to see a potential change to that drip and micro spray requirement. In terms of water use regulations, the, let's see if I can find it. The car, commercial car washing, that is something that we have implemented on our own, as well as large residential fountains. And everything else is from the state. All of the other water use regulations are mandated by the State Water Resources Control Board that I have previously mentioned.
Okay, so you're saying, for instance, the first item there, the suspension of building permits for new swimming pools, that's a State Water Control Board regulation?
Sorry, no, for the water use regulations. All the rest are state mandated. In terms of development restrictions, the only one that is, is the drip and micro spray. On this current list, the second bullet is the one from the State Water Resources Control Board.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you help me with my math? So we're at 20%, and we're going to go to 25%. And that, will that increment of 5% cost us $5 million in water sales revenue? Okay, so it's not the whole 25%, it's the, okay. So if we were to go to 40% mandatory conservation, we would be looking at a $20 million shortfall in our, right? If it's, if 5% increment equals $5 million each one?
I'd have to take a look at that, but it would be somewhere in that range. It would be pretty significant catastrophic for the revenues.
Okay, for the revenues, but maybe not for people needing water. See, I get phone calls all the time that people are saying, "Why are we still allowing people to water their lawns?" We are, right? If I've read this correctly, the only lawn restriction that we're considering tonight is, "Don't water after 48 hours after a measurable rain." Is that right? Or "Don't irrigate"?
Right. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, one of the things that's kind of challenging and I think helpful to understand is that between 70% and 80% of our costs are fixed for running the water system. They're not a variable cost, meaning that if we sell less water, we don't have those costs. So whether, you know, basically we sold 1 acre foot or $10,000, about 70% to 80% of our costs are fixed. Those are fixed costs that we will recognize no matter what. And so that's, that's kind of the challenge when we look at those severe cuts like that in revenue.
Okay. So if we go back to the, the supply strategy, and there's still the red up at the top that we're short, so don't we need more water supply? And wouldn't we get there through conservation?
Councilmember Mario, yes, we have two winters to address those. They are a shortage. I tried to show that even with conservation and even with DSAW, we have a shortage. But we do have several tools, I believe, at our discretion, one being a lawn moratorium, if truly we are, you know, approaching the fact that we're not going to have water. And that's something that certainly we could entertain next spring after we've, you know, if we've seen no rainfall. What I hate to do is go too far with conservation and really have a revenue issue that puts us in a position where we're having issues paying our debt and making payments on what we already have existing.
Okay. I just, I just feel a tension that because we're in the water business, we cannot encourage people to save more water. We have this, a plea from the pool building industry not to interfere with their industry. And so what if we stopped watering some lawns so these people could stay in business? I'm not sure if they're really going to go out of business if we go ahead with this. I need to hear from people, you know, tonight. I'm really dying to hear from people tonight, actually. We kind of, we kind of, you know, got out of the gate here. I just, it, I want us to save more water so that we can use it later if things get really bad. And I'm sorry to people who love their lawns. I'm ready to shut you off of the water on your lawn for the better good. Okay, so I'm going to hear what people have to say.
So about the pools, and I know we're going to hear quite a bit in public comment, and we'll get to that in just a minute. The issue isn't construction of a pool, it's putting the water in the pool, right? I mean, that's pretty much what we're talking about. So there are 14 pools, you're saying, on average a year that are built. So we would know where they would be because they would get a permit. We would also know if the water use a month after the permit, you know, it's complete, two months, three months, if it's goes up, or, you know, then we know that they've filled the pool. Is there something, is it even enforceable, for example, and I'm just throwing this out as an idea, that to, it's not to allow a construction to happen, because that's really where the businesses, I think, are concerned, but to have a moratorium on filling the pool, and you can monitor that because we know what the water use is going to be per site, or have a fine or something like that if they fill the pool. And would that even be feasible? Is that something that could be enforceable? Is that legal? I'm trying to find a way that, because I agree that we're talking about a minuscule amount of water, but I do think the symbolic issue is here. And I know that we have a business entity that wants to stay in business and still have work to do. So I'm trying to see what the happy middle is. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I'm Andrew Stuffer. I'm the building official for the city. We could issue permits for pools and have a condition that the pool not be filled. However, there's, without getting into too many details, pools are a shell that is watertight. And if the groundwater does rise in the area, then you have the pool lifting up. You get pressure underneath that shell to push it up out of the ground. So there would have to be some special valves and special considerations given if we're going to do that, and it's very difficult to enforce.
Well, that's not the answer I wanted to hear.
I know. We thought, we talked about this.
Okay. No, I appreciate your forthrightness.
Madam Mayor, I do think there is options that we, certainly the council has. I mean, we've been talking internally about what might be a common ground, and one of them is, you know, really making sure that the pool is covered. It's really an issue. You know, we've been offering rebates on pool covers. But one of the challenges is, it's a lot of work to put a pool cover on. And so maybe as a compromise is having a built-in automatic pool cover that goes on, has to be required with every pool, because that will make it very convenient for pool owners, because I think there's an incentive to use it. It does reduce the evaporative losses. It keeps their pool cleaner. And so that could be a compromise that pools can go forward, but they are required to have, have those devices built in. That does limit some of the shapes of pools, so that might be a challenge. But if someone wants to build a pool during the drought, then that might be a good compromise that allows that to move forward, yet it addresses the significant evaporative losses that occur.
Okay. Did you have something else, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, just a couple more questions. So is there any chance that we're going to be able to buy water this year, or has it just become incredibly competitive?
Councilmember Hart, it's gotten pretty interesting out there. We're very fortunate that we weren't in a deal to buy water from the rice farmers, completely collapsed this year, those who were in that. Very fortunate that we bought water south of the delta. Just illustrated how, I mean, if this continues, there's going to be nothing next year to buy. I mean, there really was nothing this year to buy. It was very fortunate we were able to secure what we did. And again, as you recall, we're renting that water. We do have to pay it back in 10 years. But it illustrates how, just how desperate it's going to get if this drought continues.
And then how many acre feet would be saved with the lawn moratorium?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we estimate that it's around 1,100 acre feet.
The gap there is about 2,000 acre feet, 2,200 acre feet. So it's about 14 to 15 is what that red gap is in the out years. So the 1,100 is kind of in that order of magnitude. That helps.
Councilmember Hart, that's why we were thinking next spring, if, again, people aren't meeting the conservation goal, or we're needing to meet that gap, that might be the appropriate time to consider, you know, a moratorium on that, to close that gap.
And then stepping back and looking at this from the state's perspective, they're asking for, across the board, 20% reduction in '20 or '25.
Well, it actually cleared that, clarified that. It's between 8 and 35%, depending on how well your residential community is doing already. Ours happens to be doing very well, and so our goal is 16%.
And I saw in the LA Times today that in March, statewide, 3.6% conservation. Statewide. So that means that for every place that's reducing at 3.6%, there's a bunch more that aren't even reduced, that are probably increasing because of the weather. And so, and their tool to regulate that is fines to local water agencies that don't meet these targets. They don't, there's no plan statewide to increase water capacity, because there isn't anything. There's no statewide de-salination program. There's no statewide anything. It's just regulatory, local agencies, you have to meet these targets and you're going to be fined. And we're at 22%. What would you guess, how many other cities our size are in this sort of 22% range? There's like a handful, isn't it? Maybe five or six in the whole state?
Councilmember Hart, I believe in terms of larger urban water suppliers, so ones with larger than 3,000 connections, we are leading in Southern California, and we are fourth in the state in terms of conservation.
So we're the best conservation community in Southern California?
Best in Southern California.
And the fourth best in the state of California?
Yes.
Okay, that's pretty good. That's, okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to public comment. Thank you for your patience, but I think it was good to get those questions out. So we have two minutes here at the podium. We'll start with Milt Hess, to be followed by Bryce Cornell. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider, members of City Council. My name is Milt Hess. I live on East Los Olivos Street. And I'm here this evening because I am furious. I think that staff's recommendations for Stage 3 drought measures are simply inadequate to the crisis that is before us. The report is self-satisfied pap. We need to do so much better than the weak incremental changes that are being proposed. As I reviewed my April water bill yesterday online, using the tool on the website that allows me to compare my usage with citywide usage and with other houses on my street, here's what I got. The average cubic feet per month for January through April of this year in my house is 250. On Los Olivos Street, as a whole, 1,630. My neighbors up and down the street are using 6 and 1/2 times more water than my wife and me, and we had a guest in the house in April. In 2013, I was using 900 cubic feet. In 2014, 550. And this year, 250. This community can do better. And this report does not provide any incentive for the community to do better. If it's a trade-off between water and money, please give me water. I will pay more, but I just, you know, it infuriates me that, A, people in the city are not conserving the way we talk about, and B, this report does not address it. So please reject the staff report. Send them back to come back with something that is going to make a real difference in this community. Thank you.
Bryce Cornell will be followed by Alan Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Bryce Cornell. I'm a representative of Hunter Industries. We're an irrigation manufacturer here in Southern California. And I'd like to talk about the mandates for, for the specification of just drip and micro sprays only. And even though that sounds really good, we have to think about how irrigation products relate to the areas that we're irrigating. For instance, micro sprays is a really good one to pick on. It's super easy. So micro sprays can, can sometimes irrigate up to 15 to 20 inches per hour. So when was the last time we had any of that amount of rainfall? Never. If we have 1 inch, 1 inch per hour rainfall, we have a ton of runoff. But we're going to allow it in our new mandates. So I think it's the wrong way to, the wrong way to go about specifying and mandating what kind of irrigation products that we're going to use. We should really look at the relationship and mandate something like a precipitation rate, which is the rate of rainfall, or the amount of water coming out of an irrigation apparatus in inches per hour. Similar cities have done this. The city of Santa Monica has had it in place for over six years now, and they're well on the ways for their water, their water-saving mandates. So again, I'd like you to look at, you know, rather than looking at the, in the symbolic feature of, "Hey, let's just use drip and micro sprays," when really the goal is to save water. With the use of micro sprays, we'd be promoting runoff and promoting the waste of water. So again, let's put some more teeth to the mandate and set a precipitation rate of an inch an hour or less. Thank you.
Alan Cooper will be followed by Miles Stemley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Alan Cooper. I'm owner and president of Pentato Pools. I currently have three in the queue in the building department right now. I've been in the pool business here and around the area, on and off, for 45 years. I recognize that this is the most serious drought we've ever been through. I've been through two others in my lifetime here. I've been here since 1961. We mitigated some of those in the early 90s, doing several different things. But because the issue of the lawn came up, I'd like to just state something that was given to our governor here just a few days ago by our industry, as soon as I find it. And it addresses this issue about the lawns. And we've known this information for a long time, but here it is. This is based on the premise, by the way, this was done by a water district, Santa Clarita Water District, just a couple of years ago. Again, the premise is this, that there is a lawn that we're going to remove and replace with a swimming pool of about 475 square feet with 725 square feet of hardscape or decking. And that seems to be kind of a standard today. The one-year analysis goes like this. The average pool, this is a brand-new pool now, we're going to fill it, and it's going to take 18,000 gallons. The makeup water for the next year will be about 14,000, for a total of 32,000 gallons. Water that, that was used to water that 1,200 square feet of lawn, and this is the key number, is 44,000 gallons. So the first year savings, once you put a pool in, is about 12,000 gallons, and after that, it's 30,000 gallons a year.
Need to wind up, please.
So I agree with many of the people here talking about doing something about the lawns. We have, in fact, cut back 50%.
Thank you. Miles Stemley will be followed by Renee Stapleman.
You know, I want to just echo what, what Alan just said, and thank you for your comments and questions. They were great. The fact of the matter is that pools really save about 10,000 gallons per year, per house, if you replace it with a lawn. You know, if you go into year six and year seven, there's actually going to be a shortage if we, or we're going to be worse off if we just eliminate pools altogether. The, the other thing that I want to make note of is that the CPSA, which is the organization that we all contribute to, that educates homeowners on how to save water, is paid by us as a pool industry. And if we go away, they go away. Right now, they're really educating the public on not just new pool builds, but also people who have pools currently. They're educating the public on how to save water. And again, they're, they will go away if we go away. The fact of the matter is, is that, is that if pools start going away, the implications are colossal. It will affect us in the business. The question was asked, will we start to lose our jobs? And yeah, we will. And it will hurt us big time. If you guys decide to put a moratorium on pools, other people will follow suit. We've seen it happen, where the topic comes up. So it's not just the city of Santa Barbara. These decisions that you're making today will also contribute to what other jurisdictions do. You know, the governor made it clear that, that he didn't want local agencies to restrict on a specific industry. And by putting a moratorium on swimming pools, you, you're, you're putting a restriction on our industry, is the pool industry. And it will have an effect. Thank you.
Renee Stapleman will be followed by Brad Smith, and the final speaker will be Art Grummet.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Renée Stapleman, the president of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. I'm here today to ask that one modification be made to the proposed Stage 3 drought response measures. We recommend that you remove the restriction on issuing building permits for new pools. I'm sure that you I'm sure that you realize that the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors has been very involved in promoting water savings in our community. Two years ago, before any drought declarations, we removed the grass in front of our building and replaced it with not just drought-tolerant plants, but rather a demonstration garden for the community. We retrofitted our building with all low-flow fixtures. We've achieved a reduction in water usage exceeding 50 percent. So we've done countless outreaches to our members in the community about the law that requires all pre-1994 homes to be retrofitted with low-flow fixtures by 2017, and encourage everyone to do it now and not wait until they have to. We want to help with water-saving efforts in any way we can. However, in addition to promoting resource efficiencies, the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors is also the community champion for the protection of private property rights. We take our responsibilities very seriously and look carefully at issues when there are conflicting points of views. There will be a time that conservation for the community trumps private property rights. However, on this issue, our government relations committee and our board of directors have unanimously supported the position that pool building should not be restricted per the proposal in front of you. As the representatives of the Pool Builders Association have said, independent research conducted by a water agency has shown that swimming pools, especially when covered as required, use less water than the same-size area of drought-tolerant landscaping. That's, that's a, a big difference there. I understand that when you stand
Wind up, please.
At the edge of the pool, it looks like it has to be a huge water user. However, the science does not back up that perception.
Thank you. Thank you. Brad Smith?
It seems like we're following the plan, the long-term water plan that was implemented in 2011. At that time, water was not a big issue. We weren't in a drought. Apparently, we'd had some pretty good years. And there's a lot that's been learned since then and since most of these policies were put in effect. I'd like to hit a few of them, and I'll leave some things for you guys to read. Maybe I'll use less than two minutes. Marginal cost pricing for water can meet our needs without going, you know, contravening Prop 8218. It's kind of what we're already doing, but there's more we can do there. That's where we get the biggest bang for the buck, as we've already seen. Climate-friendly landscaping, it's come up. We could do a lot more with landscaping. Again, you just got to charge enough, but people, if they're using less water, they're spending less, so that's mitigated. Stormwater capture, groundwater recharge, huge area. We have to fit it to our circumstances and our geology here, but as far as I know, there's virtually no research that's been done on it. But there's possibilities. And the last one is the desal plant, as we're starting to look into, could be used for water purification. Orange County, Santa Clarita, I toured their plant, already have it set up, they're ready to switch it over. I'm sure the state, per pressure, or, you know, like Mayor Schneider sent, is going to speed that up as much as they can. So there's a lot of different things we can do that we're not hearing about. And I propose that we put together a water stewardship council where we bring the community together and work with the staff and support each other together, rather than put it all on the staff to figure out everything all on their own. I have some articles from the LA Times that a friend sent me that are pretty relevant, as well as a little one-page proposal here, just quick outline, and I'll give them to whoever to pass on to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Art Grummet will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor, it's Alan Drew.
Oh, sorry.
How are you? My name is Art Grummet. I am a member of SPEC in the past and currently a member of the California Pool and Spa Association, which you have folders from me on. You've heard a lot of a motion today, and you've heard symbolic, and you've heard all these issues. But an acre foot is still 325,000, and you're talking about 14 pools by your own numbers. So basically, at 2,000 to 3,000, you're looking at one acre foot. I gave you all folders to try to show you not so much the need for pools, but the effect on the economy of not building pools, and the effect on the economy of the usage of water, biopool correctly maintained and covered versus landscaping and drought-tolerant water. These are huge factors, and some great points were made about, a person has a swimming pool, why can't I take a longer shower? The reality is, if properly installed and properly maintained with a cover, you would use less water and actually be saving more. But the effect on the economy and on real estate and all those people and the trickle-down method are what's really important here, especially in a town like Santa Barbara. The other thing I think you'll find, and I put it in this particular form here, this is actually our power point, and most of the great facts you've heard come up so far are already listed in here. Math don't lie. I think what really is important, and it was a point brought up, is that we have an awful lot of pools in Santa Barbara already that don't have covers on them. We could start by putting and mandating that all pools have covers on it. There is nobody here tonight speaking from the local Independent Pool and Spa Association, but we have the president in the back of the room. Each one of those gentlemen probably services anywhere from 60 to 150 pools, and it'd be interesting to see how many of those are actually covered. But with the information I left you and more, if you didn't get some, I'd like you to look it over and really see the key points, I know I'm running out of time, to the actual usage of water versus the saving of water by the swimming pool industry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment. It's back to the council. I just want to say to Mr. Smith, if you were here this afternoon, I think a lot of the things that we talked about were talked about this afternoon, including an independent panel to look at some resources in terms of the study we're doing on potable reuse, so may want to check the tape. So that will be, but thank you for bringing those issues up. That was on our agenda earlier. Ms. Murillo.
Well, I wanted to ask staff what they thought of this information about swimming pools being better than lawns, and I'm not sure if you guys got, if you all got the binder. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Bill Ferguson, Water Resources Division. We have done some analysis of pool water use to sort of check the numbers that were presented by the, the pool people to you in a letter, I believe it was last week or, or two weeks ago. The real big issue in this is the assumption about how much savings you get from a pool cover. My understanding is the industry assumed a 70 percent reduction in evaporative losses from use of a pool cover. The reference that we used was a technical report commissioned by the California Urban Water Conservation Council that cited a range of about 30 to 60 percent reduction for average-type uses. Our analysis used a 45 percent reduction. And we came up with numbers that show that pools, if you use the type of recommendations in that technical report, do actually use somewhat more water than landscaped areas, depending on the type of landscaping. Our assumption was 50 percent turf, 50 percent drought tolerant. But the real question is the assumption on the evaporative losses, and to get that level of 70 percent, I'm nobody's pool expert, but my feeling is that you would need to have the type of automated system of cover that we've, we've discussed earlier in the meeting here, where it's easy for people to, to put the cover back on, to get a high rate of coverage, and therefore a much greater reduction in, in the evaporative losses. So if, I'd be happy to answer other questions if you have on our analysis and what the assumptions were, but I think that's the main point.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Ferguson, I suspect you're correct about that. I think that the, the figures that the pool industry is quoting are under ideal conditions. And, and yet, the other thing about this is, we've been told there are approximately 14 new pools built in the city of Santa Barbara every year, so we're talking about a very small number. And I think what we need to focus on, I believe what we need to focus on, is conservation in general. I think that Mr. Hess's point is a good one. There is still a lot of room on an individual basis in this city for conservation. There are some people who are doing a fantastic job, there are other people who haven't really done very much yet. And I don't, I don't think that we have gotten anywhere near the capacity of the people of this city to do what they need to do if they feel they need to do it in terms of conservation. And I believe that that is our best avenue. I mean, we've already, we've heard, the city of Santa Barbara is the best city in Southern California in terms of conservation. If we are inspired to do more, we can do more. And it's not, the people who are working in the pool industry, that's a, it's a very small industry, and I don't want to pick on anybody in particular. I don't think that we should be going after particular, small segments. We should be looking at the big picture here and what we can do as a city to solve this problem. And, you know, God help us, I hope that we have a huge winter, next winter, and it rains like crazy. That would be wonderful. But if it doesn't, we need to be prepared for the long haul. And these little incremental, and I would say symbolic, issues like swimming pools, they are not going to cut it. What it's really going to come down to is what we do as individuals to conserve water. And that's, it's, it's, it's difficult, but it's doable. So what I think we should be doing as a council is saying, conservation on an individual basis is the most important thing that we, as Santa Barbs, can do. And I think that if we make that message clear, that people will follow. I mean, I have people telling me all the time, you cannot believe how many emails I get about people suggesting more ways that we can save water. So I think if we make that our message, I think we'll get where we need to get to, without all these little individual, little, you know, stopping swimming pools or stopping this or that. So that would be, I believe that we are in a very, very serious drought situation. You know, the numbers don't lie. We're going to do a stage three drought declaration, but I think the message to people should be, we need to conserve water and not these individual little projects. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I agree. I think that frankly, our new rates are going to drive conservation much more than we might want. I mean, ironically, we need the, the water savings, but I think we could potentially get into a cycle where the higher rates cause more conservation, which causes the needs for higher rates, which causes, you know, a, a, a cycle that's very difficult to control. So I think that we have been extremely prudent and have been ahead of the game, and is evidenced by the conservation savings that we've achieved, and that these symbolic things are not helpful to that effort. They are, I think it's difficult to communicate this issue about the difference between symbolism and reality, but I think we are on the strongest ground when we, when we take that extra work to make that case. And when folks call and say, why is it that you're allowing pools to happen? I think you have to have that longer conversation and say, this is 1,000th of a percent of the city's water supply, and we're focusing in on the real change that people need to do in their yards and limiting their, their turf watering. And, and in terms of what Mr. Hess said, you know, we do have the system that you actually described. You know, people choose what they want to spend their water on, and, and they pay and are going to pay increasingly more to make the choice to irrigate outside versus not. And I don't think we've seen the full impact of that, because this significant, this next increase in rates is much more than we've seen in the past, and I think we're going to see that conservation. So I, I agree, I don't think we should be doing anything other than what the state is requiring in regards to these symbolic things. I wouldn't be surprised, frankly, you know, and I would, I would warn the pool industry folks, I would be not the least bit surprised if the state did these, all these symbolic things. Because I think that they're, despite what they're trying to say at the state level, folks are not responding in other communities, as evidenced by the 3.6 percent reduction statewide. So I think there is the potential that we're going to be told what to do about these symbolic things, and then we won't have a choice. But as far as, look, if the state's looking to local governments to lead on this issue, they should be looking at us and they should be looking at what we've done. And what we've done has been focusing on real savings, not symbolic savings, and I'd like to see us continue doing that.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the last two speakers, and I think, I think that this city has a lot of Milt Hesses in it, and that's why we've done as well as we've done. There's a lot of people that are going over and above, and my caution is, is where we went in the 90s, where we got to the point where we conserved enough to get out of the revenue cycle we needed to support the system. So there's a balance. And I believe in the community spirit. I believe in our ability to have a little esprit de corps and make this happen without the government hammer. And Mr. Hart probably is unfortunately right, probably the state at some point in time is going to come down with these, with the hammers. And, but for tonight, I am willing to go with the staff recommendation, but only on what's mandated by the state currently, and move forward in that direction, keeping a caution, but keeping also the programs Ms. Ward is putting forth and people that are talking about conservation to our citizens. Because I really think there's a lot of activists out there that are doing the job on their own, they don't need Big Brother to, to slap them on the back of the head every time they turn the spigot on. I think we're a good community, and I think we've done well without the hammer. So I would go with the state mandates, and, and at this point in time, certainly nothing more.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I agree with the comments my colleagues have made, but I add this. The, the biggest tool, the most successful tool that, that we used in the last drought was our rate structure. And we were unfettered by state governance in that area. We could charge what we needed to charge to, to accomplish our dual goals of encouraging conservation at the same time paying for our water system. And we had the ability to adjust those rates every three months, periodically, and fine-tune it as time goes on. I was asking the question about where does tier three kick in? Because I think that 16 units is a bit high for tier three, and that's, as I say, it's a little geeky, but I see that as an opportunity. There's a place there where folks can, people watch their water bills very carefully. They watch how much water they're using, and they really watch how much money they're paying. And so I think that there are real opportunities there. So there's an area where I, I know that it's in our legislative platform, but I would, what I would like to see this council do is, once again, send a correspondence to our legislators to ask them to push forward with a, a, an effort to give us back that opportunity to be more flexible with our rates. But certainly at this time, and I'm glad to make a motion, if that would be appropriate at this time, that the council declare a stage three drought emergency and adopt their water use regulations as, as outlined here, but not including the, the prohibition of pools.
There's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the swimming pool prohibition is not mandated by the state at this time?
Correct.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, when you were addressing Mr. Smith's concerns about more dialogue...
Staff's recommendation about requiring the automatic pool cover should be part of that as well.
Okay, so we're taking out the moratorium of pool, but we're adding in the requirement that new pools have a automated cover mechanism?
Correct.
Is that right, Mr. Rouse? Are you okay with that? You're seconding?
Madam Mayor, I'm afraid I don't have enough personal information on what that means. Maybe I could ask somebody from the industry, because I'm not really sure if that mean, I don't know if that means another $500, if that means another $2,500. I don't know what that means. So, I mean, could I have somebody come forward, please? Oh, to the microphone, please, if you would. This is important, because if this is going to be part of a motion, I want to make sure it's not so onerous that it, that it's going to make us do the opposite of what we intend to do tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's about a $10,000 to $12,000 increase in the, in the overall pool cost.
What's the typical pool, new pool construction cost? Just, so what percentage is that 10 to, I mean, 10 to 12,000 is a lot of money, but just in context?
Anywhere from, from 60 to $100,000.
Okay.
So, yeah, you know, for, for us to put on a mandate like that, when certainly a manual pool cover, which is something all through the 60s, I certainly did, because that's what I grew up doing. that's what I grew up doing, is pool maintenance, works, and can work, and can be worked. So I am not willing to put that as a part of the motion as a requirement.
Okay. So let's go back, let's, so we have, so you're the maker of the motion, and is there a second to that motion? That is, we don't have a second right now.
I'd make a substitute motion, because there are a number of other things that are on the list that were not mandated by the state as well. So I would, I would move that we declare the stage three drought emergency and limit the development and use, establishing water use regulations and development restrictions to only those that are required by the state.
Does that have a second?
Second.
Okay. So to the motion, just a question, can we go through which items would be taken out versus what stays in, so we understand what the motion entails? Maybe just go through the slides and just, I think there was that one slide of development ones, that there was one of the four that was mandated, right?
So, so Madam Mayor, to be clear, that would mean that we would be reducing our target from 25 to 16, because that's the 25...
Oh, do you think...
The target would stay at 25 percent.
The target would stay the same.
Just the actual development restrictions.
Both of these are required by the state. The two bottom ones, the fountains, that is not required by the state, and the clarification for pressure washing is also not required by the state. But those were recommended by staff to clarify the way that we're enforcing on the current stage two regulations. The first one is required by the state, the second one is not. That's the commercial car dealership washing. Those are required by the state, or those are, sorry, those are already existing, those are stage two. And then the mid, second one, irrigation of landscapes for drip and micro spray, that is from the executive order. We still are waiting to hear how that may change today and tomorrow. I think the, they've directed the California Building Standards Commission to come up with new guidelines, so we are trying to stay ahead of that by requiring drip and micro spray. But I think the next couple of weeks is when we'll actually be hearing what they want us to intend for new buildings.
You could, you could say irrigation of landscapes per the executive order guidelines. That would be a way to handle the motion?
Yeah.
That, are there more? Or is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Okay, any, okay, so to the motion, Ms. Maria?
Well, thank you. Yes, I, I did have the floor when Councilmember Wyatt interrupted, but, but I, I think, wasn't it just the swi, yeah, I'm sorry, I was deliberating, and then you jumped in, sir. It's okay, I forgive you. But to, but to address the motion, I had other things I wanted to talk about, was, aren't we really just hesitating about the swimming pools? Everything else, I think we should go for, right? But that's not the motion, right, Councilmember Hart? Okay, so I think I'm not going to support your motion, because I want to go with as much as we can, and I like hanging back on the swimming pool, okay? But what I was talking about was that you had mentioned to Mr. Smith that the item earlier about being forced to do potable reuse, there's going to be some workshops. I, I really did like your idea about a stewardship council. There's people out there engaged, you are leading, Art Ludwig came and spoke to the mayor and I one day and just blew my head off with just fabulous ideas about rainwater capture and stormwater capture. I'm going to put Mr. Casey on, on the hot spot right now. So in, in terms of long-term, what, is the city doing anything, or, this is Mr. Hadmark Harkstoff maybe, in, in, those ideas, when it rains again, how, how do we capture water? Somebody must be thinking about those things, right?
Absolutely. It's part of our building code. I'll let Andrew speak to that, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, I'm in communications on a probably every other day basis with other community building officials like San Diego, San Francisco. We're talking about how can we better use gray water systems?
Okay.
Do we want to adopt appendix chapters of the plumbing code that allow us to mandate rainwater catchment systems? So, and, but these are relatively new standards that are being developed, and they're, and for example, the gray water systems beyond just capturing laundry gray water and putting it out into your, your lawn or to your garden, non, non-edible garden. Those systems are, you know, they're, they're yet to be tested and developed on a large scale. So we look to the Art Ludwigs for advice as we start to see, you know, what's out there, what's available, what does he think? Because he is a, a local expert who's, you know, very willing to share.
Okay. And then I, I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm hoping for is that there will be more community discussion where people like Art Ludwig and other, and other people who want to do more creative things, we are bureaucracy and maybe we get a little stuck. I, I'm grateful for the D cell plant, because if there's no water, we're going to, we're going to have some. But it's not the most creative solution, and it's not looking long-term at the fact that we're, we're struggling under climate change right now. And we should be addressing that in our lifestyle choices. And the Sweetwater Collaborative, they do lawn conversion with, and they made it a youth employment program. Wow, what a great idea, right? So I, I'm, if you invite me to your council meetings, I will be there, your stewardship council, thank you. But Madam Mayor, you're, you're part of that sustainability subcommittee of the city council, right? And, and how would, how would we get that on your agenda so that, you know, we could invite people to talk about long-term planning?
I think that subcommittee is really not quite what...
That's not the venue?
The venue, but we can talk about what would be the venue for sure. I mean, yeah.
I'd just like to have that, that conversation started. So I won't vote for that particular motion.
Okay. All right. So I haven't said anything yet. First off, I'm perfectly happy with taking out the, the pool situation altogether, and I, I agree with a lot of my, well, all of my colleagues, in that we have to base things on, on facts and look at what, what makes sense, and, and, you know, not, not put our decisions on the backs of one particular industry when in fact it's not going to make much of a difference. So that's, that's one thing. The other, and I, and I agree with the perspective that we're doing a great job in this city. We could be doing better. And, and I, and I hearken to Mr. Hess, when, you know, 30 seconds after we're saying we're the best in, in Southern California, and then Mr. Hess comes up saying, what's going on? My neighbors are doing X, Y, Z. And it's true, we can do, we could and should do better. And what, how I understand today is, we're going to declare a stage three drought, we're going to monitor getting to that 25%. If for some reason we don't, there are other opportunities to add more restrictions that may then force the issue, rather than asking the community to come together to address the issue. In particular, I'm thinking about irrigation of lawns or, or lawn moratoriums, or, and, and like you said, we'll know more after next winter about the real need for that, that pitfall there. So, so I, I do think though, there were a couple, so maybe, I'm feeling like, so maybe one side or the other can persuade me some ways. There are some of the things that were being proposed that did seem to make sense, that I don't think create a big, an undue burden. For example, the commercial car dealerships, if that's something that's, I, I haven't heard a peep of that, and they knew this was coming, and, and it might be coming down anyway, that, so, about the washing, the inventory vehicles to more, no more than once a week. I, I, I think there is something that makes sense there, it's probably going to come around mandated anyway. The, the new landscaping mandatory deferral of installation of any new plants that not, that's not water-wise. I mean, there's so many opportunities, and again, that goes towards the issue of turf. And I think that yes, it may be just a couple of instances as new developments go forward, but that is a strong message to make if we really do need to focus on, do we have a lawn moratorium into the future? And so we don't want to expand the opportunity to create more turf. So I, I appreciate what was being said about not adding more than the state mandates, and I, I understand the intent behind that, but there was just those two in particular that seemed to have a good message that does mean something, that may relate to if we need to expand our restrictions into the future. So, so it's not quite what the motion is. So I guess I want to hear, because Mr. White and Mr. Rouse got their motion kind of usurped away through a substitute, which is fine, that's all part of the process, but I, I would like to hear what they have to say too, and maybe we can get to some kind of consensus here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Francis?
If I could just suggest something?
Yeah.
I think that what we're, what this motion suggests is a relatively new policy direction as far as staff is concerned, and that I think we could go forward with this motion, and also at the same time, direct staff to look at what are other things that we could do that would be a really positive contribution to conservation, and come back to us with those suggestions as a separate package.
Okay, that's, that's, now, now you're singing a tune I, I'm, I'm liking, and, and I think we can look at, okay. So if that could be added to the motion, and, and as we monitor this meeting, the 25% conservation, because really at the end of the day, that's what matters. All we're doing here is figuring out, is how much water do we have when we need it? And this 25% conservation requirement that we're putting in, which is beyond what the state's requiring, that's, that's really the bottom line. And how we get there is going to depend on every individual in this, in this area about what they're going to do to, so collectively, we can reach that 25%. So if we could have, and I know we have the monthly updates, and maybe there, that can help create an opportunity to direct staff to come back if we need to add some more of these things, because we'll be monitoring this in the future, that would make me feel a lot better about the motion.
Yeah, I'm happy to add that on to the motion. I think that, you know, I think what staff is telling us is they're going to monitor every month like they do, and they bring us the drought updates as to what, what's happening in the way of conservation. And if we need to do more, we can do more. But I just, I think what, I think I'm trying to say with the motion is that we, we've done a ton, and we, we're going to continue to do more, but I don't know that we need to do the, see these kind of specific micromanaging symbolic things at this point in time. They, those are still available to us in the future. We have real, not symbolic things, like a lawn moratorium that's available in the future too. And we should look at those things when those things are required. Right now, we're on a great path, and I think we should just sustain that, that excellent progress that we're making.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the most, one of the most important ingredients here is that this council get behind the stage three drought declaration. I think that that's the, in terms of priorities, that's number one. So, and, and I obviously have disagree on the issue of whether a pool cover, automatic pool cover should be required or not. I agree that it's a small quantitative issue. So I will be supporting the motion, because I think it's important that we, you know, this, you know, it's barely a four to three vote that we're just going to, no, you know, this is, this is something where I think that we should get behind that issue unanimously, if at all possible. And I appreciate Ms. Maria's concerns that there are other particulars that I would prefer to see go forward, that, that she would probably prefer to see go forward, and those could be made as motions in addition as well. But I think it's important that we go forward with this declaration as close to unanimously as possible. I've raised the concern about rates. I think it is an area where we can send a message to our state legislators. If that doesn't happen tonight, I would ask that at least it go back to staff to bring us a letter to say, legislators, help us with this. This is a limitation which is constraining our ability to manage our water and manage our finances nimbly going forward. But as I say, I, I think that the notion, and we've done this on a variety of items, where we've gathered together and, and set the, the lesser pieces aside and made a, a strong statement.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's the key, that is the key here.
I think as much as we can make this a unanimous vote, that would be great. And I'll, I will suggest after we vote on this, that if you want to make a motion, that one suggestion would be to have staff come back at a future council meeting with a draft letter as, about Prop 218, and what some suggestions should be to send to our state legislators. Because I, there's, there's the issues you, you have raised, and I know on a national level, issues related to water and wastewater rates, especially with the layer of Prop 218 in California, where you're mandated that you can't subsidize, for example, ag users for all the reasons that we talked about, we can't subsidize, you can't, you can't assist low-income or seniors because of the rates. And so proportionately, people's, for ex, proportionally, their, their income is being more, the, a percentage of their income is more and more being used up by these utility rates that has a negative impact on especially poorer communities, and we can't do anything about it because the state law is prohibiting us from helping subsidize. So I think that might be something as a separate motion, if you want to have staff bring back, we could, we could look at. Ms. Maria?
I'd, I'd like to go through each item and, and be clear about what we are approving tonight, because I think we are in a stage three drought. Councilmember Wyatt, I'd like to vote yes, so...
So the motion is, is to declare a stage three drought, to continue, to move to a 25% conservation target? And then if you could go through each item that will be in the resolution of the restrictions, which are basically the state mandated ones? If you can just go through them one more time.
Madam Mayor, the state mandated regulations for water use are no potable watering during and within 48 hours of measurable rainfall, no potable watering of turf in public street medians, hotels and motels must display options of having towels and linens laundered, runoff onto private walkways, parking lots or parking structures is prohibited, and the existing regulations that we currently have. As well as, we could modify our resolution to simply state that the irrigation of potable water of landscapes outside of newly constructed homes and buildings must be in a manner consistent with regulations to be adopted by the California Building Standards Commission, because we do not know what those are quite yet.
So that's the motion, as I had just stated. Does that answer your question, Ms. Maria?
But, but we're not doing the, the last three?
It's the middle one that's based on state, um, state regulations, that's about to be adopted this week, and the other three would not be in the motion, because those are not state mandated.
So the swimming pool not, the third one not?
Right, but in the future, they could be if we so choose.
I don't know why we're not going the whole enchilada, it's Cinco de Mayo, but I, yeah, I, I, okay.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We were planning to come back in October to, to the council, and that would be kind of our point, where we feel like we'll have enough data to kind of say, yes, we feel the community has gotten the message, or no, it hasn't, and we feel, so that's kind of the general timing that maybe we could bring back additional elements at that time that might be the most appropriate.
That makes sense, because then we'll have a few months of the new rates in place, because that's really, as Mr. Hart was saying, the, the proof will be in the, in the pudding, as they say, or how expensive that pudding is, or whatever, whatever you said. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just ask for some clarification on the motion that's pending? So the, the mo, the, the recommendation for tonight is to adopt this through a resolution. So what I might suggest is that the council go ahead and declare the stage three drought emergency tonight, and then direct staff to bring back the resolution with these final recommendations for the restrictions that are the ones that will be, that have been declared by the governor in his, in his emergency regulations, so that it's clear and you can see the resolution in its final form, if, if that's acceptable.
That's typical of what...
Yeah, that's fine.
That, what we do with appeals and other things when there's detailed, yeah, so it's the government, but it's also the 25% conservation piece, right?
And that, and that would also go into the resolution.
Right, okay. So do we all know what the motion is?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that's 5-1. Okay. That's it for that. We have one more item. You're welcome to stay or, or not, but we'll go for, oh, yes, I'm sorry, we want to continue on this. Mr. White?
So thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would move that we ask staff to prepare a, a memo to our state legislators, asking them to initiate necessary laws to provide local jurisdictions with more flexibility for the purpose of conservation and financial stability of their water systems.
You want that to come back to us?
Yes, please.
Yeah, to draft something to come back at a future council?
Correct.
All right, is there a, is there a second for that?
One second.
Okay, anything to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. So there's that one? All right. One more item. Thank you. If you could take your conversations out into the hallway, we have one more item to take care of tonight.
Item number 16, introduction of ordinance amending municipal code, chapter 14.32, to prohibit private water well construction on properties served by the city's water system, recommending that council introduce and subsequent... recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance at the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending municipal code, Chapter 14.32, to prohibit private well water, water well construction on properties served by the city's water system.
Okay, Ms. Dyer, yes.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Kelly Dyer, I'm the Water Resources Supervisor. I'm here to recommend and introduce an ordinance amending Section 14.32 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code. The amendment would prohibit private well construction on properties served by the city's water supply system, and repeal Section 14.32 pertaining to emergencies. This was presented to Ordnance Committee on April 28, and Water Commission on May 4. Groundwater is an important resource for the city, particularly during droughts, when our surface water supplies are limited. It's also the only local drinking water resource that we currently have operational in the event that our water supply from the other side of the mountains along the Santinas River were interrupted. Therefore, it's very important that we protect our groundwater supplies for, during drought and emergency situations. The city's boundaries overlie Storage Units 1 and 3 of the Santa Barbara groundwater basin, as well as portions of the Foothill groundwater basin. That makes the city the regulatory agency for issuing new well permits. There are portions of the Foothill basin that are within the county, so the county is, regulates permits for new wells in that area. Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 14.32, is known as the well ordinance of the City of Santa Barbara, and staff is recommending an amendment that would prohibit the construction or replacement of water supply production wells when a property is or can feasibly be served by the city's water supply system. This prohibition will help ensure water users adhere to the city's water conservation rules, which are enforced for anyone connected to the city water system, and would protect the financial integrity of the city's water supply system by preventing parallel usage of groundwater and the city's water supplies. The amended ordinance would help staff manage the city's groundwater basins by preventing the wasteful misuse of groundwater, and ensure that there are adequate water supplies for public health, safety, and welfare of our community. I would like to mention that this is not currently an issue that we're seeing, there is not currently a rush on groundwater well permits, there actually has not been a single application for a well permit submitted in the last few years, there have been a couple of inquiries, but they did not follow through with an application for a permit. What we're doing is trying to prevent a problem that we've seen in other communities, when a drought emergency is declared, and there's significant water rate increases, we've seen in other areas, a rush on groundwater well permits, and so, we're really trying to get ahead of a problem before it occurs in this case. We've also identified an outdated emergency clause in the current ordinance that essentially says that during an emergency situation, a permit is not required from the city to construct a well, and we don't want that to be misinterpreted during this time of drought emergency, so we're recommending that that language be removed from the current ordinance. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, we do have a public comment speaker. Okay, Tom Widrow, you've been here as long as we have today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, Tom Widrow, City Watch. Just first off, I wanted to applaud the council for fantastically sensible decision-making during the last agenda item which relates to this one, you have to be careful with that, or I might not have a reason to be here in the future, so. Along those lines, Mayor Schneider commented about basing decisions on facts and not generalizations, so I guess I'm curious, in this case, about private property owners and groundwater and private wells, how much water is this measure going to save? That's a fair question to ask. Historically, in other droughts, how many people have applied for these, has there ever been a rush in Santa Barbara for these kinds of permits? Is this along the lines of what Councilmember Francisco said, is this just a symbolic measure? Also, Councilmember Hart mentioned the same thing, and one of the things I think City Watch really appreciates is this council making informed, educated, you know, responsible decisions based on facts, rather than seizing kind of a cheap symbolism to show that you're saving water, you know, by going after the Pool Builders Association, or by going after people who may or may not someday build wells on their property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Mr. White?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, well, I think we dodged a bullet, in fact, with Basin 1, Basin 3 is a little bit of a mixed bag, we have one significant drawer from Basin 3, as I understand it, the Veronica Springs Mutual Water Company, but I respectfully disagree with Mr. Widrow, I think we're seeing that in Basin, in the Foothill basin, where we are competing with other interests, I'm very concerned about the Foothill basin, and so I'm grateful that we are able to get a little bit ahead of the curve here and protect our, as Ms. Dyer said, our one single functional potable resource that we have on this side of the mountain, so I'm grateful that we've gotten here without sort of seeing a rush coming, because it would be much harder if people have, when you start getting this room full of lawyers and applicants and such, it's going, it would be a different story. So the fact that we are getting ahead of the curve on this, maintaining and protecting our precious little Basin 1, I just feel that this is a useful tool at this point.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, of course, our groundwater resources are very important, I agree with Mr. White on that, however, if we haven't seen a permit application in three years, or whatever the time is, I'm reluctant to put in new regulations when there hasn't been an issue. This could be another thing where we're talking about a very, very minuscule difference to the overall water supply, and so, I can't support putting this regulation in place. If we, if we got to the point where there were two or three people coming in every week for well applications, and was really making a significant impact on our groundwater supply, then I'd say, yeah, we need to think about this, but since it hasn't been a problem, I really don't see the point in the regulation right now, and I can't support it.
Ms. Mario?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation, on the other hand, the persuasive point for me is that this is water we totally control, it's right within our jurisdiction, we take water out of the Santinas River, and there could be a disaster, or some catastrophe where the pipes are, the flow is interrupted, so, I move the staff recommendation, and the ordinance committee already approved it, if I'm remembering correctly.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I do, I think this is, you know, you've got to be careful about the symbolism thing, and I totally am sensitive to that now, particularly after the previous item, but I think that this is getting ahead of a potential rush, you know, and the reason why there hasn't been a rush is because we haven't gone to Stage 4 and really significant lawn watering regulations, and the best example of where this has been a rush is in Montecito, where they did exactly that, and they had a big rush, and so I think we want to prevent that, we don't want to send the signal that this is an opportunity for people to get around those regulations before we even install them, and I think this is the right time to do something like this, ahead of the curve.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, I think being proactive here is prudent, so if it causes some big problem, we can always look at this again, but I don't see that that's, I think we're avoiding a problem that could potentially happen. Is there a Stage 4? Oh, my gosh, okay, I was just asking, okay, wow, that would, all right, we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Aye, any opposed?
No.
Okay, so that's 5-1. Okay, anything else for the order? All right, we are adjourned, thank you very much.